A lot of room.
Would everybody please be seated and silence your cell phones?
The mic is not really in its holder, should we still do what the legislation was?
We're going to have our Eagle Scout hold the flag.
Thank you.
Motion to call the meeting to order, is there a second?
I second.
Oh, I have to do the mic, I'm sorry. We're going to be sharing the microphone tonight, I'm sorry.
Is the AC just a little bit bossy?
Yeah, that's true, yeah. Motion to call the meeting to order, is there a second?
I second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, is there any board member who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the items on the agenda this evening?
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Would the clerk please read the highlights of the open meeting compliance certification?
Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, disposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. If an attendee is participating in the web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may be provided by a platform but is typically accomplished through raise your hand feature. We are using Zoom, so if you're on Zoom right now, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. If you wish for me to ask the board a question, please put it in the Q and A, Q and A, not the chat. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Board members may with the permission of the mayor only interrupt the speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy to call dignity in good taste.
Thank you. Now, we would like our Eagle Scout candidate to come up and hold the flag while we stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Serge. Okay. Is there anybody who has any public comment this evening on any item that is not on the agenda? Yes.
Robert Corby, 7 Washington Avenue.
I don't know if it's on, hang on one sec, I think you have to...
Robert Corby.
You have to hold it, I think, let it light up.
There we go. How's that?
And then...
Okay. Robert Corby, 7 Washington Avenue, and just a couple of quick requests from the Friends of the Arboretum. Due to the heavy rainfall in July, the sun from that out hoping requests a little cutting ability needs to be cut so we can do some maintenance work involving other trees. My other request is several of the trees, the cages seem to have disappeared. I know we have extra cages from trees that did make it, and I wonder if we could get those from Zach. At our next board party, we will reinstall a lot of the trees that we had. Thank you, thanks for the time today.
Also, I'd like to, is that on? Also, just a reminder, if you folks can finish filling out the forms for us on insurance.
We'll get those too.
Yeah, thank you, Steve will follow up, thank you. Okay. Anyone else with a comment? Okay, first up, the scout presentation for the Japanese knotweed project in the Robert C. Corby Arboretum.
Good evening.
Hi.
Shibiya.
Good evening. My name is Marzengiri.
Close.
My name is Marzengiri. I am a live scout from Boise, at 167. And I was looking to do an eagle project in the village arboretum. Ever since I was a kid, I always loved nature and the outdoors, and I always wanted to give that to my community.
Yep, thanks, pull it up, thank you. There we go. Now you're good, oh yeah, go for it.
Hello, my name is Marzengiri. I am a live scout from 267. And I was looking to do an eagle project in the village arboretum. Ever since I was a kid, I always loved the outdoors and nature, and I always wanted to give that to my community. And this project is just just that. Our project is a solarization of Japanese knotweed. This project will be really beneficial for the arboretum because Japanese knotweed is an invasive species. Like most other invasive species, Japanese knotweed outcombs local species that the arboretum is trying to protect and preserve. For my project, four sections of Japanese knotweed will be cut out and then covered with seven knot plastic tarps. The plastic tarps will then be weighed down by straw bales. I will help you, this is my true commitment for this project. The rest of the details are on the proposal. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Good job, yeah. No, this is great, this project. And how do we know it's invasive? Because it comes from another country, hence the name. Any comments from the board, I can pass the mic. Yep?
Thank you, that was a great presentation. Have you had a chance to talk with the Friends of the Arboretum, or have you worked with Corby and his group? Okay, great, thanks. Sounds like a great project.
Hey guys, okay.
Anyone down here? And could you clarify who your sponsor will be for this project?
I don't have a sponsor right now. So I think the, the tarps and the straw bales should be provided by the board.
So you're asking for tarps?
Yeah.
And is there a list that's included with your application of what?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just so we're... There are potential, there are suggestions to him for a position. Would you want someone from the village to mentor you also and be a liaison, or will you handle that yourself?
Yeah, I would be helpful.
Okay. Want to be a liaison?
Sure, I'll be the liaison.
Trustee Lanfair.
Information.
We'll help you out, okay?
If you have any questions or need clarification.
And what you can do is you can contact the office and, you know, set it all up, okay?
Thanks.
Justin, anything, want to pass this?
Thank you very much for the presentation, that was great. I'm looking through the materials in front of me now, but do you have an idea of how many tarps and how many straw bales the cost would be? I don't know, but I mean, it's, I think, it depends.
Zach, yes?
Just to follow up with trustee Lyken. You can come up with square footage, the maximum hours of trading. Okay. And then if stone can replace paper bales as weights to keep the weight down, then that would keep costs...
Okay, is there any further discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the Eagle Scout service project as stated or as submitted. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we want to say with the village providing the materials listed?
With the village providing the straw bales for stone possibly, and the tarps, Lily and Lanfair, trustee Lanfair will be the liaison, and scout will work closely with the arboretum staff.
Second as amended.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you for helping us out, that's great. Well done. Okay. Next up, we need to set a public hearing for a special permit for 14 South Main Street.
Hello.
Hi.
Jason Pierce, I'm with the F. Martin and JBC Google, applying for a special permit. 14 South Main Street, just here to answer any questions we have.
So, it's going to be an Asian restaurant, is that correct? Wow, I can't believe it, no falafel. We have a lot of Middle Eastern.
So change from the tavern, upscale tavern idea. Oh, this is, oh, I thought this was Rachel's. So this is where Bree's, oh my gosh, awesome, okay. I wasn't sure.
And, any questions?
Mayor Palmer.
I, I don't, because I haven't very much information in front of me regarding what your proposal is. So I guess we will review that at the special meeting. The only proposed changes you're stating so far are just cosmetic, is that...
Yeah, I mean, it's all really ready for us, that's what we want to provide.
Okay.
It was built out already as a restaurant, okay. Yeah, okay.
I do have a question, so will you be serving alcohol there?
That is part of the plan, yes.
So then you'll have to get your liquor license and then go through that. And then, this is just kind of cosmetic, will you use kind of like the bar area as like a sushi bar? Or have you guys decided that?
We haven't, we don't have a layout yet, but the JBC noodle at 900 Jefferson Road, it doesn't have a sushi bar that you sit at, but it does have a service bar.
So is this a franchise of a...
This is a franchise, this is a franchise of business in New York City. This is the local affiliate of New York City business.
And there's one on Jefferson Road, you said?
There's one on Jefferson Road, and there's the second is going to be at the gates, this is a little bit there.
And what is it called?
JVC Rice Noodle.
JV or...
JV, V as in boy.
Rice noodle?
Yep, rice noodle and rum.
And is this a sit-down or is this a take-out?
This one will be sit-down and take-out.
Sit-down and take-out.
And you're going to coordinate then with our code enforcement officer with all of the additional information?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, we really don't intend to make a lot of changes.
Okay, well, it's like number of seats, you know, things like that.
Absolutely, we understand.
I know, not your first rodeo.
We have a lot of experience.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And do you have timing that you're thinking about being open? Yeah?
When you want to be open? Hopefully before the new year.
I'm sorry, not when you're open, but the timing, the operation of time, like the time operation from...
Two hours.
Lunch and dinner.
So lunch and dinner, dinner, open till, what are you thinking, 10?
The application has 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And just to the board, I wasn't there for the approval of the pub in the old Rachel's location. Remember the hours for that restaurant that were approved?
I don't offhand.
No.
Yeah, we can, they can look it up at the office for you.
Typically, the restaurants have the same hours of operation that are granted to one or granted to all. I think this is right in line with that, I just didn't know what it was exactly.
11:00 to 11:00.
And also, well, also it depends on the serving hours for their liquor license. Regardless of a restaurant, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, through the state. Yep. No, we're just talking, whatever license you get from the state for serving liquor, that has, it's out, the hours on it for when you can serve liquor.
Yeah, that would go until 2:00 AM.
Yes, yeah. Okay, any other questions, or can we set a date, what would the date be?
September 10 at 6:00 PM.
Is there a motion?
Just one other comment, and this has to do with the application. So typically, the applications have a little bit more of a descriptive element to them, so that when we're walking into the special permit public hearing, for the public to see this and understand, you know, what's taking place, a little more descriptive elements might be helpful rather than, you know, for example, provide a description of the activity that is planned for the location, it just simply says, "Operation to the dining area, new floor tables and paintings." It doesn't say anything about the actual establishment or the type of restaurant.
I understand, with this being the third in the area, I mean, it's pretty easy to...
Yeah, so just plug and play then, okay.
But if you could give that information to Steve, hi Steve, so the board can review it. That would be great.
Yeah, I can, I mean, something as simple as even the website for Jefferson Road.
You can work it out with Steve, wonderful. Okay, is there a motion?
What is the time for the public hearing?
6:00 PM.
On what day?
September 10.
I'll make a motion to move this to public hearing on, at 6:00 PM on September 10.
Sir, a second please.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Thank you very much, we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Mark, okay. 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 Next up, next up is the acceptance of the Real Budo bench donation application. I don't know if there's anybody here to speak on that?
No, I don't believe so.
I want to say something about this bench, because this is a dedication to a young man who lost his life earlier this year. You may have read about it. He was murdered in Washington DC while he was on a mission for the Catholic Church in an underserved community. He's a Pittsburgh, thank you, he was a Pittsburgh lad who graduated, and I think, Levy attended St. Bonaventure and was doing one year of a special program with the Catholic Church. So it really is just so tragic, but I'm glad we're going to have at least a reminder on the canal. That's where the bench is going, on the canal. So, is there, do we need to vote to, this is a new, okay, this is a new procedure that we're voting on each night? We need to...
Apparently, any donation made to the village needs to be accepted as a donation.
Did you all hear that, we need to, anytime you want to donate anything to the village, the board needs to actually make a formal motion and vote to accept the donation, yeah.
I will make a motion. I would like to make the motion that the board accept the gift from the Raboto family for a bench to be placed on Shane's Alley. I won't specify, because we don't know the exact location, but generally, we have an idea, and that is the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, roll call please.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
That's a nice memory, okay. Next up, review of trash receptacles.
I'm hoping Zach...
Anybody want to talk trash?
Yeah, we do.
I had to say it, it was like so easy.
We've waited a long time to talk trash. We, the board may remember that we did add to our, this year's budget, a budget line to include the replacement of trash receptacles on Main Street, which have seen some layer and tear over the last few years. The challenge has been, the challenge has been that we need to find a trash receptacle that fit the existing mounts on State Street, I mean, on Main Street. And so, I believe that Zach has been successful in that endeavor, and we are seeking the board's approval for the purchase of the trash receptacles as demonstrated in our information packet.
Question, so these are metal?
Yes.
So then they, for upkeep, is basically just kind of spray painting? Is that...
Depending on what's, you know, needed, yeah, probably hosing down every once in a while, this is a layer of ash, and then painting.
And do you foresee it being a little bit easier to maintain the current ones that we have now? Those are kind of those old slats, right?
Yeah, I mean, those are pretty old, so they're to the point where they need more maintenance, yes, it'll be easier.
Great, thank you so much for finding those.
Dave, anything? Here. And how many are we firing?
We got 10, when Lily and I walked, right, we had 10? 10 trash cans.
I think, depending on, it depended on where the cost landed, with the shipping and the receptacle itself and the mount, we have to base it on what we've got, how much we have budgeted. That's going to drive the train as to how many.
So we could approve up to 10?
Yeah.
We could do that, and then, you know, ramp it up? Yeah.
I didn't know exactly what we budgeted with it.
I can't remember, I think that was some months ago.
It was a lifetime ago.
Look, the price point, I'm going to have to look, do these things get it? It might trigger a bidding situation.
Oh, you're right.
I have to look at the...
Well, these are a specific style.
Yes.
Trying to find another place that's going to have a specific style with a specific mounting bracket.
I agree.
That's what might be more...
I understand your pain, but I, so let me take a look, and you can change. It might trigger, just because we have the accepted purchase policy, and if it's over a certain dollar amount, it could then trigger other things, so even if you have quotes for other ones, we'll take a look. I'm not trying to squash it, I'm just trying to...
Okay.
So your recommendation would then be to wait until another meeting?
No, you can approve the style.
Okay. It's just whether we're bidding it or not.
Right, and you're looking to purchase, and if it's within the purchase parameters of the...
Perfect, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, okay. Want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that the board accept the bid, if not a bid, that the... Procuring.
Recommendations.
Yeah, procuring the trash... For the park? Receptacles, trash receptacles from Main Street to replace existing. Up to 10, depending on the price per recept.
It works.
Okay, it works, all right.
I second.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Got it.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
The glamorous part of the job. Okay. Let's see. Next up is the review of the rental registry application. Some of you may be aware that the board, earlier this year, passed a rental registry law requiring any rental in the village, whether it's a short-term or a long-term rental, to be registered with us in the village and subject to annual inspection, to obviously, me code, things like that. So, we have the information, is there anybody want to kick this off? No one wants to kick this off? Because Lisa, I know you had brought up the...
So, I'm looking at what we received in our packet, and I know that I had sent you an example from Huntington. All right, the unit description that's in here right now. Is that what we're going to be using? No, okay.
Unless the board wants to recommend, you know, in other words, that's why we're discussing it, just before the board.
So right now, Steve, you're giving us that first form in our packet, right, this one? And what I asked last time was if there was something a little bit more description, descriptive of what the actual structure is, like rooms, I mean, we don't have to get that elaborate, but I just thought it'd be a little bit better for us to have, since you're going in there anyways, to give us a little bit more description as to what the rental unit is. So I just pulled this up as an example. So I just kind of want to get feedback from you guys, what do you think that this is something that we can play off of? Maybe taper down a bit, do you see that, Dave? I'm kind of, just thought it's an easy checklist type thing? Easy, right? Easy for me. So that's kind of where I am.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have some thoughts on this? I do think, I think they also had an inspection checklist, which I thought was kind of great, you know, because one thing that we could do would be to have a form created, and I know, Dorothea, you were working with our software company to see if we could get a form.
Right, we have to work with the building inspector program, see if we can add the rental registry as part of the program with Steve's monitor. So we'll look at what can be created within the structure.
Okay.
But if we have the set document of what we're looking for, it'll make it easier to get that created.
You know, what I'm thinking is, why don't we do this, because I mean, I like some of the ideas from this form, you know, and also, I know our attorney was interested in speaking with you about certain things that are embedded in the state code that we could just wrap right into this. Not a lot, but, you know, just a few more items, so what if we have a meeting next week? When's our next meeting?
We don't know yet.
Well, we need to do a bill pay, we need to have another meeting, right?
Right, and the anticipation is doing one next week.
Okay, because I think maybe what we could do is just, you could tweak that, maybe with Jeff, take a look at some of these, and let's bring it right back, so we can close this out and move it forward, so we can start setting it up.
Trying to keep it as, initially as simple as possible, because it's going to be a very large task to start, so more information will be required, the longer this process is going to take.
Oh, agree, but the good news is, is once everything is identified and in the system, at least now you have a database to work from to update as needed, so that's, you know, you're right, it's the upfront work. So is the board amenable to that then, that we just bring it right back when we do the bill pay? Just with some of the tweaking that, you know, Lisa has suggested, and anything from our attorney as well?
I think in addition to that, as mentioned in someone else, in addition to the Huntington information that we received, is that in our code, we, I would like to go back and revisit our upkeep, minimum upkeep housing in the village as well, so that there might be something that we need to address.
Yeah, I think that's where it's going, in conjunction with this. Yeah, good point, really good point, thank you. Yep. Dave, did you have anything, Dorothea, was there somebody online, or?
Nope, it's just me.
It's just you? Hi.
Yeah, just me. I would suggest if any board member sees something specific for the, from their board, to email Steve, so he can get that incorporated, because we know Lisa likes a certain portion of the checklist. Maybe there's something else that we're not seeing that you see that you...
Yeah, and let's set a deadline for that, let's have everything in by this coming Monday? So we can turn it around, okay? Yeah, that way, if we have a bill pay, we can turn this form around and... Okay.
If I may just...
Yes, of course. Sorry, please.
Okay. So the general items to review, essentially, once you receive the application that you've created, if you were to then, do you have a part where you sign off on it, let's say, you have a permit reviewed, received by, reviewed by? So once you get reviewed by, that's just reviewing the application and the date received. There's nowhere in here until the permit is granted, so what's, is there going to be a signature line on this that you sign? How will they know, and how will we know that if one of these unfiled, everybody and you?
It would be, the way we're thinking is through the William Law Code, I would issue a certificate, like a building permit, but it would be a, you know, a separate, not that, that keeps on file.
Okay.
A separate permit that it actually issued and has to be on the premises.
Okay, so that issued permit would assume that everything's here on this checklist when you went through the house.
Don't get the permit...
You don't get a permit unless everything's on here, so if you have a concern with the yard free of, degree of jump, for example, you would just simply tell the applicant, you won't receive an approval at this time, here are the things that need to be improved, they go through all that, and then they get a permit. There isn't like a checkbox or a signature thing for you each time, it's just generally, the permit's not granted unless all of these things are up to code requirements that you know to exist.
Right, and I would give them a time frame, depending on severity of whatever it is.
Okay, so one of the examples of that might be the carbon monoxide and smoke detector affidavit, but here in your list, we kept it quite simple, and it says, carbon monoxide detectors per code, smoke detectors per code. They don't get the permit unless it's proposed, to your comment, we don't need to worry about this whole affidavit form, because they're not getting the permit unless it's up to code, right?
Similar to when we issue a building permit, if it doesn't meet the criteria, they're never going to get it.
It's receivable.
Yeah.
So the next thing, just briefly, I did like some of the specificity in the Huntington application that gave us a little bit of understanding, for example, one-family, two-family, multi-family dwelling, or if it's a duplex, whereas on the permit, the, it asks for the property address and the number of dwelling units. Am I safe to say, if it's a duplex, there's two addresses? And then it's just simply the number of dwelling units within each address? So we don't need to know if it's a multi-family dwelling unit, or multi-family dwelling, which will be two addresses, separate permit for each one. All right, so let's talk in the interest of a...
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is good input, and I think what we can do is just forward it directly to him?
I think all my questions are being answered, though.
Okay, okay.
So I'm actually working...
Okay, just in terms of moving the meeting, no problem, no problem.
About the only thing that I gathered that... About the only thing that I gathered that this wouldn't collect is the ownership type. And then we, as code, don't have requirements for a designated agent if they're outside the county, do we? I don't believe so. So in this form, it asks for a person responsible for maintenance of the property, and then it asks for a designated agent, in this case, if they don't reside in some county. We don't have that requirement or code to have a designated agent for a rent property in the village.
I don't know that we have to have it as a requirement, do we? It's in the code, I think it would just be your contact person.
The contact.
And you have that already, actually, in some of, for some of the, yeah.
So again, just going back to, you know, well, it's laid out a little different, between the ownership information, the business information, and the property manager information. We have all points of contact necessary, we feel comfortable with that if there is an issue. The checklist that Lisa referenced feels useful, yeah, there's a lot more information. It's just a question of utility, and what do we do with it, and what's the value of it? And I guess at first pass, until I know the value of it, I tend to agree with the simplicity of it to get it done and get it going before next year. The more complicated it becomes, the more time you're going to need, and the less likely it gets done by January 1st. So just generally speaking, I don't mind making it potentially more complicated later. Put in the front end, getting this process started makes sense to me.
And I just have one question as well. Right now, we're talking about doing a permit every year, is that correct? So I've been thinking about that, and this is going to be labor intensive, obviously in the front end of this. Do you think, right now, we've never done this. So do you think from going never to once a year might be a little overkill, and maybe that we should think about maybe having it on every two or three year process? I mean, I.
Well, we'd have to amend the law.
Yeah.
To the law.
Which we can, I mean, we can always amend the law.
I mean, if you look at other meetings, probably some do two, some do one, some do three.
I'm just looking at our history, we've never done any. So going from nothing to once a year is a big jump. So that's just.
Well, you can always bring it back to the board if you want to amend it, you know?
Yep.
Because this is what was passed earlier this summer, so, you know, it's an interesting suggestion, yeah. Anybody else down here? Okay. So we have our little bit of work to do. All right. Let's see, where are we here? You know what, it's not even six, we are zipping along. Yeah, Steve?
I have an item that I'd like to pass the board on. It came to me today, that's why.
Does the board want to hear that, hear the item that?
It's nothing that would need to be presented to the board, it's in regard to a previous decision made by the board, a clarification.
Okay, because, in other words, it's not an agenda, it's not an agenda item. Is it administrative?
Yes.
Oh, well, then I would be willing to hear it. I just, we cannot necessarily take an action or a vote because it has not been publicly agenda. Is this something that requires immediate action?
Yes.
I feel like it's like 20 questions, I know. Is it a mineral?
In regard to the fire department.
Oh. Would the board be willing to hear this if it's about our first responders at the fire department?
Yeah, if it's for information only, I think, could we accept the, our attorney isn't here, but could we accept information from our building inspector purposes of information only?
Yeah, we definitely could do it for information only. Jeff's going to be here in 10 minutes, we could do a couple other agenda items and circle back just to.
Yes, because it's a clarification, like outside on a previous.
Okay, previous action? Okay, all right. Why don't we skip up then to item number seven, which is gateway signage?
I would like to make a request regarding that agenda item.
Yeah.
I do believe that there are incoming at 6 o'clock, because it was farther down on the agenda, who would like to discuss with us the gateway signage. So I requested the board.
Yeah, hold off, just to.
Hold off on that, I'm wondering if we might want to do the bill pay or another.
Yeah, we could do that.
Or video.
Or the video conferencing, yeah, because Dorothea wants to update us on that.
Yeah, let's do, let's do.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving up to item number eight, which is video conferencing. Dorothea, do you want to fill us in? I know that they have now extended the law, am I correct?
Yes, you were informed, the state law was extended to July 1st of 2026 for municipalities to extend ability to have video conferencing as needed, bringing it back to the board to see at this time what your feelings are about adding that component. Things happen sometimes, you know, you can be here, it's always better if we have the board present, and all times if we can try to do that. So it's really to get your.
Yeah, my understanding is, and this came up at a NICOM conference during COVID, it was an emergency law enacted by the governor to enable boards to video conference. And now this is sort of a hybrid of that law because so many municipalities really found this to be really, really useful, also for just added accessibility for board members that maybe couldn't make it physically to the meeting if there was some type of an emergency, but they could video conference in. And so the law expired earlier this year, I believe, was it? Or they just extended it before it expired? Okay, so it's extended another couple of years.
Yep.
And the word is that I've received is that it may become permanent in New York State for any municipality to opt in to enable at least a couple of board members if needed to video conference in. And just so everybody understands, anybody can video conference in on a meeting, even a board member, they just can't vote. This law would enable them to be able to vote by video conferencing. That's the difference, okay? They would be able to conduct business on behalf of the village, and we could get a full forum that way.
And that was brought at the conference, or was it recently, they did, NICOM did state, there was representative there who indicated that they are, it is being opened as a permanent addition to the open meetings law.
So, you know, I think, so you were interested in bringing it back to the board to see if the board would consider it, again, just going forward?
It's.
So wanted Jeff to take any action or?
Yep, if the board was looking to do that, I believe it is an act of a resolution. I know currently our historic preservation board knows that. I think I have heard some things from the planning zoning, but I keep on net that they might be considering some of that, because it does, it does happen. We all have things that come beyond our capabilities and we have to deal with.
Dorothea, when did we talk and vote on this? Do you remember what date around here?
It was last year, it was prior board.
No, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Prior board?
I want to say it was, was it last?
February?
Winter.
February?
Prior board. Excellent.
It was the prior board voted.
Yeah, I want to, I want to clarify. Yes, you're saying that the decision that was made by the Board of Trustees at that time was that we would not permit video conferencing for the elected officials.
Correct.
Video conferencing would be permitted for the auxiliary boards of the HPB and PCBA. They made that decision on their own.
Yeah, any board makes the decision.
They may do that, yeah.
Yes, the village board could make the decision for all boards, or let only with their will, and let leave the decision to the other boards.
And it was decided at the time each individual board could make that determination.
Then I would suggest that the board put it on an agenda. Do we have a time period? Do we have a, sorry?
No, there's no time period, this.
I would like to see it placed on a future agenda for discussion. I think it's an important issue. Members of Congress must be present for their vote, and I think this is critical for us as well, we're a small village, so, and answer votes to our constituents, so I'd like to have a board discussion regarding it.
Okay. Justin, anything?
No, I'm happy to talk about it, I guess my vote on it before was that I wanted to be in person. I spend all day on virtual meetings, and I think it's fine to be in person sometimes too with our constituents, and also allow constituents to be there remotely. But I feel like this has worked well enough for us, and I'm okay asking this right now in person, but it was a discussion.
Okay. Any other comments? Yep.
I think it's helpful to be in front of people. The term extraordinary circumstances, which is when somebody could choose to not be present, frankly, it's discretionary what exactly that means or subjective is the better word. So my personal preference is as it is, I think it's been working well, we had very little concern with regards to absences or being away. We seem quite accommodated to people's scheduling, and I think that's worked well overall as a work, and I think I'd like to continue that.
I also want to say that I think that we've taken a responsibility to our residents, and that, you know, we've thought about the fact that we need to be present for meetings, and I think that unless there's an emergency, if there's an emergency, then we don't vote. But I think that, I think that we need to be in person, I think there's an element of liberation that happens in person that can get away with you, get away on you when you're online, cooking dinner, or whatever you need to do. So I just, I've been on both sides, and I just think that our residents deserve us to be present.
I agree with all of the comments, however, I agree with Lily to bring it back maybe for additional discussion. I think the reason being, we always want to be here in person, and emergencies happen because they're unforeseen, and, you know, things just simply happen. My concern is, you know, we always want to move the business of the village forward as best we can with as many voices from our elected officials as we can. And the word extraordinary, we may be able to narrow that down and take a look at really what that means, you know, so there's no abuse of the word extraordinary, you know? So, I mean, I agree, I just think, just to bring it back for some additional discussion and maybe have residents weigh in as well.
Just one follow up.
Yep, oh, here we go.
I suppose the only follow up is if there's a natural disaster that keeps us from doing business in the village in person, it may make sense to have some flexibility in that regard. This law, I suspect, I suspect New York State, like COVID, created that flexibility inherent to all institutions, the helpful law having been approved. As a result of, in the instance of significant extraordinary events, that all of us, the majority of us, would not be present, there'd be flexibility inherent to New York State's governance, that would let us do it.
And in a natural disaster?
Isn't that how they did it during COVID?
They would call it.
Yeah, yeah, they would, yeah, correct, correct.
I'm thinking internally.
Yeah, so if we had something internally perhaps, if somebody wants to put it back on the agenda, do we talk about it?
Well, I'm thinking if somebody's recovering from surgery and they can't make it in, you know, but they can zoom and participate, I mean, things happen with people. It's nothing more than that, I cannot imagine.
The most obvious is that, you know, a lot of respect for the trustees, if they have an emergency and they're sick enough that they can't come in, I think that we need to give them time to get better.
Or a family member, you know, stuff happens.
But if there's an emergency, they need to be there in the emergency, and they're not going to be able to be here doing village businesses if they are overwhelmed with an emergency. So I just think let them take care of their emergency, they can still listen in, and you know, and they don't vote, there may not be a vote at that meeting, there's not always votes.
Okay, so clearly a discussion here. We can bring it back on the agenda for some additional discussion at a later date. Next up, how about the Treasurers' report?
Sure. Presented a bill pay, this is abstract five, total amount is $20,332. We have a sense, I'm not seeing anything, we have notes to the board. Something popping out of me unless something popped out of you for a question? If not.
Any questions on the bill pay for the Treasurer? I don't know. Yeah, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill pay as presented.
Second. Roll call please.
Trustee Lycan.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, this is May financials, these are the final financials as well as I provided you, and they kind of go hand in hand with the annual financial report that was filed with the state. We were in on time as I informed the board.
And thank you, that's a big deal.
Yes, it's laid out very nicely.
That's actually the printout from the state.
Thank you.
The same code, and that's how it comes out. And really, let's just go to bottom line, because I think what everybody wants to know is what happened with fund balance. So the general fund went up $202,512. Sewer went up $132,142. So yes, each fund had a surplus. The discussion the board was going to take in it after everything was done with the May financials is what they want to do with reserves. Now that money has gone into fund balance, so if you decide you want to fund it or reserve, we've taken from fund balance to do that. So I want to put that in your mind, we had discussed the things that were actually due amounts to the previous budget, we held back. So if the board wants to move forward with that, I can put that on the agenda, or how do we?
I think we should move forward, we've been talking about it, we all have ideas for reserves, we have excellent news, we have a surplus in sewer and also in our general funds at the end of this year, so we're excited to be able to set up some reserves and plan for things in the future for our village.
Was there any questions with the financial or any note reports? I will be posting these up online for the public to see. We're very happy with the listings.
I have a question, this is just actually, this was a surprise for me, so I'm just looking at the state retirement system, his increase $10,000 and social security $12,000 for employee benefits. So is it because of just cost, or is it because we have more employees, or what was the increase from?
It could be the cost of security, the matching, the difference of all the time, different things, there's a lot of costs in there. New York State retirement did go up significantly last year, and we also had a fee increase in this year.
And that's through the state?
That's the state, they determine those rates, that's kind of handed down.
Yeah, we're at their mercy.
I receive an estimate when we go into budget time, and we pray that that's going to be accurate.
Okay, thank you, Lily, or thank you, Dorothea.
So if I can have.
Oh, hang on one second, I think Dave.
Okay, Dave, go. Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. So one of the things that's hard to get out of this is the approved budget, the modified budget, the expanded budget. Modified budget is after all the transfers.
Yep.
Is there any way to get this printout, budget, modified budget, the expanded budget?
You know, as much as I'd love saying yes to trustees and to say no.
No.
This is a set software package, and amending such software package is very expensive, as well as changing software.
So I have to do that work, I have to go back.
Look at our original.
Fully original, and look at it today. And do you have to just generally know are our transfers increasing or decreasing generally over time?
Last year, what we've been transferring has been less.
Has been less.
Yes, we've been getting, I think, better with the budgeting. I don't want to say better, we're anticipating.
More proactive.
We're anticipating the need in a different fund, we're always going to have labor transfers, that just happens with the budget.
Unless there's other comment, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the bill presented, we already did that, the May financial reports as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Lycan.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, what's next?
Annual financial report, we need a motion.
Oh, we need another motion.
Oh, for the annual financial?
Do we need to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept 2023, 2024 annual financial report as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Lycan.
Aye.
Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Sophia.
Yeah, it's great.
Just to bring the board up to speed real quick, you're seeing May financials in here. As you know, it seems like we're behind unfortunately, just the way the books close. I can't quote that May and go into June, July until May is over with the year end. So you will be seeing June and July, I'm hoping for our next meeting. I started that bank process. So we'll be caught up quite quickly, and you'll have current numbers for the current year, but right now, I think these going as planned. I did want to let the board know, we did receive notification from runner of county regarding our sales tax distribution. So we are receiving 176,428.44. That is up from 172,958.27. So we did get a little bit more in sales tax than last year. So we're right in that target point that we anticipated for this year's point so far, so far.
Yeah, it's great.
So it all looks good. Any questions for me?
Nope. Anything on the clerk's side?
Uh, I'm on vacation next week.
Yeah, congratulations. I know, I know.
Outside of that, I have nothing to share.
You know, why don't we do that? Do we want to just have?
Try the sign?
Are your sign people here?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm ready. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, the next item is the gateway signage into the village.
Um, recently, not too recently, closer, six months ago, six months. Uh, these gateway sign, uh, what I mean by gateway sign are these signs that we have at each entryway of our village. And one that sat at South Street and Jefferson Road was taken out by an unfortunate accident. And I have brought to the board, uh, the, uh, each gateway sign looks the same, they all look the same built. And so the proposal is that we replace the sign, and we are not comfortable, I think the village clerk has indicated to us, that we did not want to take it to insurance because then our deductible would be sky high. So that means that the replacement money would have to come out of village funds. So I wanted to give the board, uh, a background history on how the signs came to be. There are six, uh, entryway signs in the village of Pittsburgh. And so to that end, I would invite, uh, former trustee Paula Sherwood to let the board know what's the history of the entryway signs to the village of Pittsburgh. Please come up.
Paula, please come up, yeah, thank you.
We have a microphone for you and everything.
Oh, boy, this is scary. Here. Okay. Um, hi, I'm Paula Sherwood. I live at 27 Creek Ridge, right outside the village. Lived in the village for 30 years, was a trustee for 20 years. Still, the village is very strong in my heart. Um, so I heard about the accident, kind of, it's very sad because that sign at Jefferson Road was in a prominent spot, uh, entering the village. And, uh, the history of that goes back to, who was 90?
94, 95, probably, 96.
95, 96. Um, we wanted to have some type of signage that was, um, exciting, enticing, interesting, that we show, um, that we cared about our village and that we wanted to welcome people entering the village. We were looking, uh, to set up a brand, and this was kind of before branding was in. And we, at one time, the design that we came up with, Bob worked on it, myself, Glenn Brown, uh, who was a trustee, and he had a company called Idea Works. Well, the logo that is on the sign, um, was made into Christmas ornaments. Uh, we had pins that we wore, we had coffee cups. And if you recall, I think you still use it on your stationery today. So, um, one thing, uh, that was exciting for us was we worked with a company down in Perrineville called Sign Language. And I think the company is still in existence, and the guy that helped us, Jeff, I think he may still be there. But once we put these signs up, we started getting wonderful phone calls from all sorts of municipalities wanting to know where we had gotten these signs, you know, who did them, how did we do them, so on and so forth. And I think as you drive around Monroe County, Ontario, uh, all the counties around us, you will see, uh, a lot of signs that kind of took their ideas from what we started way back when. Um, I would love to see the sign recreated. Uh, I know it's a financial, um, concern, but I really think that it's a, to have that sign put back the way it was, would be a nice consistent, uh, look for the village. And as, instead of coming up with something different, which showed, I'm afraid, stand out to much. So, um, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
That's great, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Lilly, you got any questions? I think I covered it.
Um, I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
I mean, we all want a sign.
Want to sit down?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, I'm just making general comments and we can pass the mic. Um, one thing that I would like to see on the sign, and maybe it is a, uh, a fascia board or something underneath the main sign, is the recognition at our gateways that we are a national historic district, that when you're coming into our village, it's a special place, and it's preserved. And I would like to add that, and I'd like the board to consider something like that, just.
Banner on the bottom.
Yeah, you know, on, on whatever sign is chosen. And I do know, um, our, our archivist has been out of town, but, um, there are, um, we have, I think, in our archives also pictures of other signs that we've had over the past years, like even when I was a kid. Um, so it's, it's interesting to see the progression over the years. Yeah, anything?
So I'm looking at this packet, Lilly, probably tell me. So the first page, it has the monument mounted sign. My understanding is all the sign faces are the same, is that correct? I mean, they look.
Pretty much, yeah, yes.
So, so then we actually have a choice to either put it back in the mounted form, which is the way it was, or there's other signs that are on this post line, right, that kind of hang. And those are the two options for us. Is that right, if you want to put the sign back?
Yes, it was a matter of size as well. The area by, uh, at the gateway by South and Jefferson Road is rather large green space. And so the sign, in order to be noticed, uh, was of a certain size to fit. I think also as part of this consideration, uh, and, uh, this was mentioned also to me, uh, by, by mayor, was that whatever decision the board makes regarding the replacement, that we should also consider replacement of strategically placed landscape stones around the, uh, sign to prevent the older accidents from occurring in the future.
Yeah.
So I think that, from my position, if I'm, I'm going to take a position, and that is, that I would like to see the continuation of the consistency of the existing signs. Uh, so continuity is important. I, I'll have you come up in a minute.
I forgot to mention one thing. When we first put the signs out, we had some lighting on some of the signs. We needed ones that were, um, brown. We have to keep, um, totally.
Oh, that's great, solar.
And it was on, 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 on South Main Street.
Thank you. And, uh, in addition to that, I think that the continuity and also, uh, I just, the visual on it, I think, I care for the visual. Uh, and also the logo. I saw a hand up. I don't know, mayor, if you would like to recognize.
Hang on one second, yep, yep. First of all, just one minute, any, any more comments from the board before we?
Oh, I think so. And rocks, no rocks, light in or no light in, it's fine by me.
One last comment, what's the, what's the difference in price?
The estimate that was given to us, I concluded it in the information that was sent. Sophia, wasn't included in the packet?
I can't, no.
Board received it prior, though.
I missed it, I think it was around 35,000.
For the mounted?
For the mounted.
And then how about the hanging?
There's more than that.
Was it?
Yeah, I think it was four.
I think it was over 4,000.
I'd have to double check.
Yep.
So greater than four, and then the, the hanging version, do we know?
We never got a price.
We don't have a.
Yeah, why don't we look at that?
I mean, I'm just interested to know, I mean, are we talking about half price? I don't know. And, I mean, remember, the hanging sign is going to be elevated too, so we can bring it up, so the visual of that and the size can be bigger. We didn't like, I, I mean, I guess, I would just like to see the cost difference.
Okay. I think then, uh, the board would request, um, uh.
I'll do it. Reach out and get those.
I'll look around. Yeah, why don't you work, I will do it. Yeah, well, why don't you work with the office and they can help out, okay?
I'll, I'm also looking at the mayor's suggestion of the additional bank.
Yeah, is everybody agreement that we, you know, recognize that our village, our village is a national historic district? You know, I think that's great when you're, you're entering a beautiful historic place.
Mayor, right.
Yep.
I do like the idea of the historic local street common. I think we can do it separately, though, from the decision on this mounted monument or hanging sign, because I think whatever we put to the bottom of that sign, put on the bottom of all signs.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So I think we could probably do it in two steps rather than roll up this. Gives us more time to think about the design elements. Where here, we have it designed, it's already predetermined and matched.
I just think we can get a price on it.
Yeah, that's.
That's all I'm saying. Can we just get pricing on everything? Yeah, yeah, Bob, you had a comment?
I agree with all of your discussion tonight. Um, one thing I wanted to add, I think, and I agree with Mayor Palmer's, uh, suggestion to put something about the historic district. Because the village is a state historic district, a national register district, and a local district, I would say entering or welcome to Pittsburgh Historic District. Because the other thing that we've talked about for many years in the past is everybody that comes in will now know that there's, it's also a local district, subject to design. So, and I agree, I think the signs are iconic, pause, design skill, was instrumental in developing those, and it, it ties many themes, the canal and other things together. So I'm glad to see that you're going to restore them. Um, I also suggest that, that, that we use big signs in the locations where they would fit, this is one of them. And I think that extra language is going to be hard to fit on the smaller signs, probably that will come in larger signs. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some action items here, just to follow up on pricing and everything. Okay, great.
Yes.
Oh, there's other, yes. Name and address, please.
Hi, Caroline Torres, 41 Monroe. Uh, quick question, so if somebody hit the sign, why are we having to hit it?
Couldn't find out.
If it's a hit and run.
Yeah.
So maybe if we have the boulders, they can't run.
That's why we want to put boulders in the landscaping.
Should we have, really, a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
Slow down.
Good question, though.
It is a good question. Okay, so, um, it is after 6 o'clock, so we are going to move. Anything else before we move to the public hearing?
Oh, I have two comments.
Excuse me, we have comments online.
Uh, it's awful. I apologize to the online person, it was answered by.
Okay, asked and answered, okay. Okay. First up, special permit application for 19 South Main Street. Anybody here for that? Well, they were here last time. Want to talk us through it? What do we do? I mean, we. Yeah, I guess so.
You weren't given.
You weren't, no one was, no one was given any?
I don't think they probably, I bet you they probably didn't know that they needed to be here because they were here to present it, do you think?
Well, it's.
I'm thinking maybe they didn't think they needed to be here because they were already here to present to us, and they maybe didn't think they needed to be here for the open.
No.
Um, can we hold off on this one and see if we need a special meeting, and maybe we can turn it to the special.
Okay.
Before we open it.
Try the next one.
Okay, so. Well, I'm sorry, Jeff?
I agree with you.
Oh, okay, okay. We're just not going to open the hearing for this particular application. All right, so next up, uh, the special permit application for 28 Lincoln Avenue. It's the Lutheran church. Hello.
Hello. My name is Patty Payne. I am the congregation president of St. Paul's Lutheran Church, which is right up the street. And we filed this application because we would like to have a special permit to permit us to have a French immersion language preschool at our church. There would be no more than 22 students with three teachers. And it runs Monday through Thursday, uh, from 8:45 to 2:00 P.M. They will be inside the, the church, uh, except for going for recreation at Pittsburgh Recreation Center outside. So we don't think it will involve disruption.
Hang on one second, please silence your cell phones. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we don't think that it will involve disruption or noise, um, you know, to the neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, you know, we have the director of the preschool here, Carrie. Uh, so if you have any questions specific to the preschool, she could answer them. Uh, but we think our parking is adequate. We have a nice parking lot, and, uh, we, there will be three parking spots for the director and the two teachers. The parents come and go, so parking lot will be adequate. They don't run the preschool on Sundays, when our congregation is the greatest use, of course, of the parking lot. Um, and so, um, really, we hope we will grant our special permit application.
It's a smaller crowd than a church service, isn't it?
That is true.
Right, okay.
That's a very good point.
Okay.
And quieter.
Yeah, well, I don't know, little kids.
Well, they, you know, they're, these are children who speak French.
That's right, I was going to add, France.
Ooh la la, okay, yeah, back to the board.
Um, do you have a, uh, English speaking preschool that goes on at the same time? Do you have any preschool in that building at all now?
No, just this one.
It would be the only one. Have you ever had a preschool before?
Uh, not to my, not, other than this one, no.
Okay, so this is a, a brand new thing.
Yes, if you had Sunday school.
We, we, yeah, we have Sunday school, right. Um, but we would like to make use of our village, you know, and, uh, because obviously it's not used seven days a week.
Yeah.
It provides some income that helps our operating budget, um, so.
I personally think it's a wonderful idea. I wish that you were there when my kids were going to preschool so they could learn French, but.
Yeah, Dave, any comment, anything to add?
This is, uh, the public hearing, so we moved this to public hearing last night.
Yes.
And I don't have any comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it back to the board before we open the hearing. That's the idea for any discussion from the board or questions. Any other questions? Yeah. And you can also make a motion if you want to.
Sure. Uh, I think this sounds great, just curious, are the classes, is mostly instruction done in French, or is it, um, mostly in English?
It's all in French.
Sounds great.
Yes, yes. So somehow they take these little people and teach them in French, and they spontaneously or sing in French. It's, it's.
I should sign off.
No.
Sounds good. Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second, please?
I second.
Okay, the public hearing is now open on.
I need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote? We have to vote. I'm jumping the gun.
She's excited about the French. She's excited about the French.
I know, he's all excited about the French.
It's my big moment doing meetings.
I know.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Landfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now, the public hearing is open, if anyone wishes to speak specifically on this agenda item, it is the application for the preschool program in French at the St. Paul's Lutheran Church. And is there anybody, excuse me, online?
I can't hear you.
Oh, you couldn't hear me? I'm so sorry, I apologize. If there's anyone wishing to speak on the agenda item, it's regarding an application for a French immersion preschool at the St. Paul's Lutheran Church in our village, and if there's anybody online as well, we can check. Anybody want to speak in French?
Carrie, put some in French if you would like that.
Je parle en français.
Thank you very much, Nancy. We have no comments from online.
Okay, there are no comments, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Landfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board, is there a motion? Oh, there's a comment from, from our code enforcement officer and building inspector, Steve.
On the inspection of the building, there was a requirement to reverse the door.
Ah, okay.
That needs to be, that has to be a caveat. I don't know if it has been reversed or not yet, but...
It hasn't been. Your, our contract is going to be reaching out, can you talk about that?
Okay, so, we need to amend the motion.
Well, they haven't made it yet.
No, but we need to, yeah, we need to amend it.
Well, they haven't made it.
No, you haven't made it yet.
I know. We don't have to amend it, we just have to put it in the motion.
So, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the, I make a motion to approve the preschool, the French preschool at, what's it, I guess, 28 Lincoln Avenue, with contingent on, they want the door created...
Do you want to file martial approval?
She's making a motion, please, thank you.
Right, building inspector approval with the door reversal. Do I have a second?
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Landfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
We...
Nice.
Okay. You're good, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Next up is the hearing on the local law for short-term rentals in the village. You want to chime in on that?
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't we, we didn't have as many people as when we first started at five, why don't you just go over the, the compliance?
Sure.
For meetings, just, just highlights.
Just highlight, please give your name and address.
Here, let's pass that down, just so everybody hears it in the back.
Oh, boy, I never needed one of these. Okay, if you can please provide your name and address, if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand if you wish to speak to the board directly, or put your question in Q and A, I don't respond to the chat. And I just ask that everybody be nice to each other, this is not a debate.
And?
Oh, and please limit to three minutes or less, and we will be talking to you, and we have some nice little signs for reminders.
And the sign-up sheet, we're going to be calling?
Yep, we, we have a sign-up sheet, so we're going to call by the sign-up sheet. After that, we'll open it to anyone who hasn't spoken in that one.
Okay. Yep, hang on.
Can you just make one more clarification, that the name and address is the name and address of the primary residence of the person, rather than of properties they may own?
There you go.
And they could give both addresses if they wanted, yeah.
Do you use a microphone?
Yeah, it's, it's hard.
I am, we only have one, so we're doing our best, we are trying to share.
What's your town? We should be important.
This isn't a town.
This isn't a town. Village.
Okay, point of order, I'm bringing it back to the clerk, please.
Please provide your name and address, please make that your primary address that you recognize, okay?
Can I make a statement, Mayor?
Sure.
I'd like to take this one step further, I would like to make sure that the speaker says their name, they says, they say their primary address where they reside, meaning where they vote and where they get mail, if they own an STR and where that STR is, and if they are a village resident or not. And I really am going to insist that I hear all four of those pieces before you speak. Thank you.
I'm also going to qualify that.
Yep.
If you're classified under protection of law, you do not have to provide your name or address, please just give it your resident.
Yeah, there's protections.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
Also, under the New York State Open Meetings Law, all meetings are open to anyone in the public to speak and speak freely, for up to three minutes, whether you are a resident or not, so all are welcome here. Okay. Is there, are there any comments from the board before we, there's a motion to open the hearing? Are we ready to go?
We are, we have to go. Would you like to open it, Mayor?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the purposes of hearing of which law? The local law on short-term rentals.
I second.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Landfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the hearing is now open, and we will have the deputy clerk or the clerk call out who has signed up to speak, and we'll start going through the list if you wish to speak.
Okay, I'm going to call David Wilks.
And, can you just show the signs that you're going to be holding up? You're going to be keeping time.
Yeah, and I can speak loudly, so you have three minutes, when you're at two minutes, when you have one minute. Final thought means wrap up your sentence, please.
Like a game show.
They're gentle reminders, I know.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so, David Wilks, I'm a homeowner of assets 19 East Jefferson Road, I'm a homeowner in the village, and I, I'll be very brief, I'm just here as a resident who is interested to hear from all my fellow neighbors, their thoughts in regard to short-term rentals, and again, I'm just here, neutral like Switzerland, I would love to just hear everyone's thoughts, and again, via, to my civic duty as a resident, and so, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next up, please.
Carolina Torres. Hi there.
All right, welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, a little closer, maybe.
Carolina, Carolina Torres, I live at 41 Monroe, I'm a homeowner, I don't own any Airbnbs, I am, however, a user of Airbnbs, I use them all the time when I travel, I have a very large family, and the whole time my husband and I lived abroad, we came to Pittsburgh and visited my in-laws and stayed in Airbnbs in the village, and we loved it. So, I feel like they fulfill a useful function, my understanding is there's about 14 Airbnbs in the village of 650 homes.
I'm going to just pause, how, what is the exact number that we have of Airbnb, or is short-term rentals right now?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, correct, just so everybody knows, it's fourteen.
I just kind of set the stage for what I understand to be happening, so we're talking about 14 homes out of 650, just by comparison, about 30% of the 650 are rent, long-term rentals, so we have many, many more long-term rentals than... So, I, I feel they fulfill a really useful function for people like me with large families, and I, I, not just that, but I think they bring money into the village and they support the business in the village. I feel like there was a report that was generated by a committee that did not recommend that we get rid of the Airbnbs, in fact, they recommended registration and, you know, some legislation around it, but not, you know, and definitely not grandfathering, I mean, not sunsetting the existing Airbnbs. And the reason for that is because it's fiscally irresponsible to basically shut down businesses for a problem that doesn't exist. That report found that there was no reports of problems with Airbnbs, that it's not large corporations coming in here and buying out all of the historical district to turn it into, you know, a Florida party town, nothing like that is happening, there's 14 homes that are generally rented by families who are here to visit families. So, it's fiscally irresponsible to put our village at risk of a lawsuit, and the lawsuits have not gone well for municipalities that have done this, just to solve a problem that isn't even there. So, I really, I do not support this legislation, I think that it's, it's creating an enormous amount of risk for our village, and it's going to cost us money, and as a taxpayer, I'm not for it.
Thank you for your comments, thank you. We just want to keep, thanks, everybody, we just want to keep it moving, we just want to keep it moving, please hold your applause, we just want to, there's a lot of people who want to speak, so it's going to take a while. Next up, please.
Robert Corby.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue, I'm somebody that's familiar with the history of the village. I've mentioned to many people in the 1970s, there was a big push to expand the commercial district into residential areas, and that didn't happen thanks to the work of historic Pittsburgh dedicated residents. The purpose of village government is to protect the interest of the residents that live in the corner of the streets. One of the things I'm most proud about our village is the livability of our residents. In three minutes, I can't dive into all the details of this legislation, but I applaud the board's efforts to tackle this, I read the draft, and I supported, I think it's a right balance between allowing some short-term rentals with benefits that Carolina just mentioned, but also providing some protections to ensure that our neighborhoods are still livable and that we still have residential real estate available for us, so thank you from my perspective to the board for all the work that you've done and all the deliberation that you've already done on this issue, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next up, please.
Mike Reynolds, 35 Church Street.
I don't know any short-term rentals, you know my name and address, Mr. Red. We heard a lot about how wonderful and short the STRs are, and I can imagine it's nice to stay in Alexandria in an STR, but the village of Pittsburgh is not Alexandria. We, we've heard a lot about how, well, I can acknowledge there are some pluses, but there's also some minuses. The, the STR is a hole in the fabric of the neighborhood, you can't invite them to pot luck, you can't invite them to, to the village porch parties, they're just a hole in the neighborhood, we don't need that. They're part of the commercial districts within the residential neighborhood, we don't need holes in the fabric, and we don't need to grandfather these things, they're, and any of them could probably sell, with the changes in property values in the village, any of them could probably sell their place now and find another one somewhere else and make a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you for your comments, thank you. Next up?
Jack Cargill.
Could I make, hi, could I make a statement before I start?
As long as it's less than three minutes.
This is from my wife, I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, to the Pittsburgh Village Board of...
Jack, hold on, Jack, can you say your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 8 Vaught Avenue.
And you're a village resident?
I, we are, yeah. To the Pittsburgh Village Board of Trustees, due to the circumstances beyond my control, I gave my husband permission to speak for me at the village meeting, August 13th, 24, in regards to the Airbnb petition, and she has added, I want my name taken off this petition. That's what she said.
Oh, but what's the petition?
The petition, was that the petition that was submitted earlier? Yes, I think that's what she's referring to.
Yes, there was a petition submitted by resident last year, yes.
There was, there was a petition submitted by some residents last year, and so she, she wants her name removed from the petition, okay.
Right.
And the petition was to hold a moratorium, and, because there were concerns about having any STRs at all in the village. Okay, just so everybody's up to speed on that.
Thank you. Okay. My wife did not read the petition, she is not a lawyer and does not do well with long, technical, complicated sentences and such. I was not present, I was not present at the time. She told me later that she relied on the gentleman presenting the petition, who told her the village government was looking into the Airbnb situation, how to keep it from getting out of hand, and how to control it. He did not read the petition to her, nor give the specific number of Airbnbs in operation at the time. Also, he did not mention the immediate moratorium intent. There is an Airbnb directly across the street from us at number 5 Vaught Avenue, operated by the owner and previous occupant Cindy Cooper, who now resides in an apartment locally since the passing of her husband. The Airbnb is occupied most weekends and has created no problems. My wife responded verbally and positively to the village's action to control the Airbnb situation and keep it from getting out of hand, in number and location. Her intent was not to shut down or eliminate existing tenants. The village law that there's no business operated in residential neighborhood, whole house and whole apartment rental is a business. The main difference between these and Airbnb is duration of rental, long versus short term. No business transactions takes place at either site, type site, no unknown or uncontrolled number of customers, no merchandising or service, or... Speaking of business, people staying in our village each weekend is good for business. This Cooper provides her weekend guests with up-to-date information on Pittsburgh business, which they may wish to use. In short, we favor keeping the established with licensing and oversight, and we thank you greatly for your sacrifice of time and effort to benefit all of the residents of the village.
Thank you so much, Jack, say hi to Marilyn.
Do you want a copy of...
You could, you could, yep, you can submit it to the clerk, thank you.
Joanne Shannon.
Joanne?
Hi there.
Hello. Can you, can you help? Yeah, just pull it, there you go. Better, yeah.
I am, I'm Joanne Shannon, and I live at 11 Mookan Avenue in the village, I don't own any STRs, and I am here to speak on behalf of Board of Directors of Historic Pittsburgh in support of the Village Board of Trustees intent to regulate short-term rental of residential property by the addition of Article 29 to the Village zoning code. Through its 60 years of advocacy for the historic preservation of the remarkable village of Pittsburgh, our organization fully appreciates the trustees' thoroughness...
Excuse me, Joanne, closer to the microphone, they, they can't hear you, yeah, really, go for it.
You can even take it off, Joanne.
Yeah, just hold it, hold it, just pull it out.
Is this better?
Oh, yeah.
They couldn't hear anything in the back. Yeah.
I am reading this on behalf of Board of Directors of Historic Pittsburgh in support of the Village Board of Trustees intent to regulate short-term rental of residential property by the addition of Article 29 to the Village zoning code. Through its 60 years of advocacy for the historic preservation of the remarkable village of Pittsburgh, our organization fully appreciates the trustees' thoroughness in drafting the law and supports the legislative intent of this local law, particularly the preservation of the character and integrity of the housing stock in the village's residential neighborhoods for residents, whether they own or rent their property. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Next up, please.
Bob Michaels.
Hi, Bob.
Thank you, good morning.
Right into the microphone, right into the microphone.
Right into the...
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. First off, I'd like to thank the entire board for all the work that they have done regarding short-term rentals. A lot of work, when, I was a member, as you know, of the committee, I did an enormous amount of research, I do not oppose short-term rentals for this village, however, I do feel that short-term rentals in residential districts kind of cut into a sense of community, it cuts into the general daily life that we all love in the Pittsburgh village, and I think we need to be cautious of putting our village residential areas at risk. Why take a risk on a residential area? I think it's appropriate for those who want to venture into the business of short-term rentals to consider commercial districts, as is, as are outlined on the proposed legislation. I think the village has done a great job of putting that legislation together, it's fair, it's equitable, and it protects our residential areas. There's always a question of, well, long-term rentals are businesses also, it's not a question that it's a business, it's not a question that the STRs are a business, it's a question of what harm could be caused of the, just presence of people who don't have a stake in the village, and that's the, parts of the whole issue, as far as I'm concerned, is it's people who are here for one to three nights, move on, continuous turnover, and another group of one to three nights. So, I think, all in all, the legislation stands on its own merits, I think was well-thought-out, and something we should certainly consider. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments, next up, please.
Nancy Coats.
Hello, welcome.
I am Nancy Coats, I live at 50 Rand Place.
Can you hear in the back? Into the microphone. Yeah.
I'm a...
I know, well, intimidating, there you go, I know.
I am a village resident, I live at 50 Rand Place. I agree a lot with what Mr. Michaels just said. I've got reservations... I've got reservations about SDRs in the village. I know they're already here. The residential areas, that's an issue for me. I have read over what you guys put together, and I think it's reasonable. It's, I like, if it's heavily regulated and seriously regulated, I can agree with what you've put together. I know it's taken a long, long time, and a lot of thought and action has gone into it. I still don't like the idea of SDRs in the village. I mean, what's wrong with Wright's Park Lane? It's closed. Who wants to put one in Wright's Park Lane? It's our home. I gotta be honest with you. When I first moved here, I lived in the Syracuse area for 22 years. My daughter and her husband bought a house in the village. They lived in right before. I had to find a house that I'd never heard of the village in Pittsburgh in my life. Never heard of Pittsburgh. But I'm here. I've been here almost 13 years. It was about the only house left available nearby third week of November 2012. And it was a dump. And I'm in it. I've invested in my home. I like my neighborhood. I like my neighbors. I don't know all of my neighbors that well. But I don't really like that they have a short-term rental across the street. So that's it. But I do think that you've come up with a good resolution, and I can live with it. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Next up, please.
Peter Brzezinski.
My name is Truman Peter Brzezinski. I live at 81 South Main Street in the Village of Pittsburgh. I own no short-term rental. I'm, I'm in favor of the legislation that you drafted. I think it's well thought out and it covers the point. I would simply ask that you consider this. You, you make a point of talking, of using the term hosted and non-hosted. I want you to be careful. A hosted unit is essentially converting that house to a duplex. And I ask you to think about that. Because we have many, that is, that you have essentially created a double in what would be a single-family zone if it were permitted. I ask you to think about that. I also ask you to think very strongly about when you, about how one could possibly show hardship for something that they've done and invested in on their own. They made those decisions. So I think that that's a difficult thing to prove, to be very difficult to prove. And as I understand the, uh, requirements for granting such a variance, which is what I announced too, would be that the use itself is essentially the same as those around it, that it would cause no damage to any of the properties around it, and that you do have economic hardship if you can't use it the way you proposed. And I think that that would be a very difficult thing to prove. So I ask you to consider that when you're considering any kind of approval. So summarize, I, I think the legislation's great. I ask you to think about what you meant by hosted, because I think you're talking about converting single families to doubles. And I also ask you to think about what criteria you're gonna put in place in order to determine economic hardship. That could be very hard to show, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Peter. Next.
Jeffrey Mason.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi. My name is Jeffrey Mason, and I have lived in the village for 64 years. So I'm not a newcomer. And my main question is, why can't the short-term rentals be only in areas that were the non-residential? Because somehow or another, as soon as that happens, the next one must be one, then next one, then next one. And you get this creep into the point where there's hardly anyone living there anymore. So that's my thought.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming in. Next.
Maria Vinat.
Hi, Maria.
Hi, good evening. I'm Maria Vinat. I recently purchased a house in 9 Elm-
Oh, close to the microphone, please. So, yes.
I recently purchased a home at 9 Elm Brook Drive in the Village of Pittsburgh. Before that, for nine years, I have been a tenant of 8 Lincoln Avenue in the village. And I was honored to serve on the committee to review ideas on managing short-term rentals. When I started on that committee, I felt 100% that I was against it. I was worried that I wouldn't know my neighbors and that there would be too many parties and that sort of thing. After serving on the committee and doing research, extensive research, I 100% flipped my mind in the other direction and see so many good benefits for our community. So I stand by the report. We, as a team of six, worked on, there were two parts to that report. I stand by that and as a good, a good tool to use. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. And thank you for your contribution and to the other members of the committee. Appreciate that.
Janine Powers.
Hi, Janine.
Janine Powers. I'm a new resident of the village at 8 Sutherland Street. And I'm not an Airbnb owner. But I do want to, I just want to applaud the board for working so hard to bring forth some form of regulation for the short-term rentals. I think it is important. I think you have to find the balance. And I read over your documents, and I thought that it was a pretty good effort. So I really am thankful to see that you are addressing it and that it's up for, I guess, approval. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You're welcome in the village. Okay. Next.
Laura DeNiro.
Hello. Welcome.
My name's Laura. I live at 64 State Street in the village. I am in-
Into the microphone, please. Yeah, that's-
I do. Is that better?
Closer. I am.
I am in support of the short-term rentals, but I do think regulations are important. The market for short-term rentals has grown tremendously in the past few years. As a result, so is the need for regulations to ensure that short-term rentals are both safe for hosts, guests, and our community. Regulations also help maintain the character of neighborhoods by controlling the number of short-term rentals in each area and preventing the commercialization of residential neighborhoods. And finally, it ensures that absentee landlords are held accountable for issues that arise in their short-term rentals. On many occasions, Airbnb in our village has, at any given time, to have three to four individuals in and out of that property. They have blocked sidewalks, where I have watched 10-year-old kids on bikes have to go around them onto the road on the State Street. I have watched wheelchairs have to go around them on State Street into the road because renters or leases are blocking the driveway. There have been accumulations of trash that have led to rodents and noise complaints. The absentee of the homeowner only complicates these issues. Living within a few houses of a short-term rental, it makes me feel comfortable if the landlord or the owner was nearby and watched over who was coming in and out of the property. Additionally, one-family houses were converted to two-family homes with two kitchens and a locked door for separation of the original part of the one-family dwelling. Otherwise, it will set a precedent for anyone with one-family house to convert to a two-family house. As the short-term rental market continues to grow, it's important for governments and stakeholders to work together to establish clear and effective regulations that benefit everyone involved. This is our home where we raise our families. I love our community and look forward to continuing to maintain the character, the character of our village.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Next, please.
I'm gonna apologize, can't read the first part. It's either Tom or Tim Cargill.
Mr. Cargill.
Hi, folks. My name's Tim Cargill. I live with my mom and dad at 8 Bout Avenue. This is my father, Jack Cargill, and my mother, Marilyn. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just wanna thank you all for serving our community. I really appreciate you guys huge. Thank you. I'm Jack and Marilyn's favorite son. My dad here is 91 years old, and I'm very proud. Likewise. In regards to this issue, the Airbnb that's right across the street from us is one of the nicest, best-cut properties on Bout Avenue, by the way. I have a customer that owns an Airbnb on Maple Street. I do work for him there at his property. He lives in Connecticut. And it's one of the nicest-cut properties on Maple Street. By the way, I, I don't see what the problem is. I do understand some of the concerns that folks have and some really good points that I brought up today that I never thought about. But I also have customers that, in Pittsburgh, that have long-term rental properties. And I, I think that's more of a concern, the way those are kept up. And I'm not saying that they all are kept up well, but Airbnb seem to be kept up, in my opinion. They have an incentive to keep them up because they are rated by customers. And I think that goes a long way to, you know, policing the quality of care to these properties. I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't want it to get out of control. You know, I don't want there to be too many of them. That's a concern. But I'm not seeing there be a problem with the quality of that. And the one that's across the street from us hasn't been a problem, noise-wise or, or any, anything else. So I don't see, I don't see it being a problem.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Next up.
Mark Camarano.
I might have butchered the last part. I apologize.
Caraman. Good evening. Speak right into the mic, please.
Mark Caraman. I live at 39 Woodcrest Drive in Pentfield. I own 58 State Street in the Village of Pittsburgh. It is a short-term rental. Here's what I have prepared. In my wildest dreams, I never thought providing something so beautiful for families to enjoy would be portrayed so poorly by a select few just because it is something they want, not something that is actually good for the village. I spent my entire Sunday here in the village with my family and thought to myself how sad it would be if other families weren't allowed to make their memories here as well. We are ambassadors, yet we are treated like criminals by the panel of trustees. The crime we are committing is bringing in individuals of high quality, both in character and network, as well as reuniting families here to spend considerable amounts of money in our village. Over 70% of the people that come to stay with us have either been from Pittsburgh, the area, or visiting family in the region. These are not strangers. These were once, these were once in large part former residents and should be looked at as returning guests rather than outsiders. Who are you to say that the parents can't bring their children back to show them where they grew up? Who are you to say that they can't have a home to come to to send their kids off to college? And who are you to say that people can't come here to see their dying mothers one last time? Because we've had that on numerous occasions. We're not asking this because it's what we want. We're asking this because what the village actually needs. Our neighbor, Mr. Limbeck at 62 State Street, submitted a document two years ago referencing a petition that stated he received signatures, which one said she wanted to be taken off of, from residents, and asked the village to look at regulating Airbnbs. He referenced homes starting on fire, miners having parties, and drug overdoses as scare tactics, scare tactics to get residents to sign. None of this is happening here in the village. The biggest problem we've had is twice personally people have parked on the sidewalk, which we've since put up a sign to show people that's not allowed. We went out and spoke to the people that signed the list, and many thought they were signing the petition to look at establishing provisions or regulating Airbnbs, not banning them altogether. Some of them actually come here to speak tonight. Again, these are well-to-do families coming to spend a considerable amount of money and share memories in the village, not getting drunk and passing out on the front lawn. Which brings me to my next point. It has been said that many of the rentals in the village are rundown, and Airbnbs are in phenomenal condition, as everyone would agree. My thought was to go out and see these. But as I started to do so, I thought, why not show pictures of the long-term rental that I purchased and what I turned it into? You'll see pictures over to the right of what I actually presented. What we actually did, I spoke to the owner of 64, and it just told me that there used to be constant drug activity. Then the person that lived there, the long-term renter, had actually fallen down the steps. The neighbor had to carry him back from, from Level 7. You can see, it looked like a junk garage sale, and I turned it into a gem of Pittsburgh. So my final thought is, which, which property would you rather live next to? And which would you rather have as your neighbor? The garage sale junker that falls down the stairs every single night for your children to see, peas in his front bushes? Or people that actually come here and spend thousands and thousands of dollars in your village?
Okay.
Making it better for everyone in the village? Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Please, hold your applause, please. Next.
Fran Kramer.
Hi, Fran. Fran, Fran, can you pull the micro-
I want to speak to the audience.
Can you hold, no. Fran, excuse me, one second. There's a point of order that I want to mention.
Go ahead.
When you, we have a public hearing, you always address your comments to the Board of Trustees, not to the audience. That is a requirement. That is a requirement. If you'd like, could you please take the mic off? And can you use the mic so people can hear you? And please turn, please turn and address the board. That is our policy. Can someone help? Thanks, Tim.
I can speak on the side. And now everybody can see me. The problem is, we can't hear back there. That's how we're allowed.
Okay. Hang on. I want, I want the village clerk to weigh in. This is a point of order for this meeting, please.
It's not a free, the public is here to witness the public hearing. You need to turn and face the board.
Well, they only tell them that, can you hear me in the very, very back?
Please, please put the microphone further. Okay, just go, just go. I, I don't know what else to do. Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
Make sure they can hear me.
Yeah.
Fifty years ago, in October of 1974, the Barge Canal broke, and our house was destroyed. And we had a very bad time in the city of Pittsburgh. And our dream village, can you repeat? Mike, it's in your mouth.
Fran? No one can hear you. Please put the mic closer to your mouth. There, thank you.
Okay. All right. Now I'll hold it like this, and it's closer to you like this. Can you hear me?
No. I'll do all your stand. Okay? Yeah, you can. You're not going to be able to get that.
Okay. The reason I want everyone to hear is because these are the people who elected you. And they have a right to voice their opinions, not just today, but in the future. My concern is very deep. First of all, there's a lot of seniors. We depend on our neighbors. Neighbors are everything for emergencies. We do not know who will live in these particular short-term rentals. They could be sex offenders. They could be bodies. They could have weapons. There's no checks and balances. There's nothing. We have a village that's been traded by many, many people to keep it very special. And it is. It's investments in the village and a whole Barge Canal trail. We know our neighbors. We help our neighbors. We do not want somebody that we have- We do not want somebody that we have no idea where he comes from, what he's going to do. And by the way, there is no benefit for the villagers, or the Board, or anybody. There are not going to be shopping here in our village. The benefit is for the people who own these short-term rentals. The second thing is, who are these people who own the short-term rentals? I would like to see a list of names. That would be certainly helpful. I've been told that many of them are not local. The second thing is that we must always be clear and explain. I have two models in life. One, do the right thing. And two, never give up. So, my final remarks are going to say, number one, we might have to have some litigation here, seriously. Number two, we might have to involve York State. I don't understand how some of these rentals with elevated regulations came to be. So we need explanations. Never give up. Do the right thing. And in my opinion, there is no benefit and no reason for short-term rentals where people will come and go, they don't appreciate our village, we don't hold their background, we can't even run next door for help for something. This is a very great, special village. We all love it, we do. We've lived here a long, long, long time and you've heard from a lot of people. I'm just asking the Board, how did you even accept 24 already without any regulations? I understand now you're going to do some regulations, but nobody's going to follow the regulations. You're not going to check, they're not going to check. We all know bureaucracy. So in my opinion, short-term rentals are not for this village and never will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you Fran. Thanks so much for addressing everybody. Please hold your applause, next.
Timothy Flynn.
Thanks for your help Lisa.
Good evening, my name is Timothy Flynn. I reside at 170 Baby Road in Grand Quay. I am not a resident of the village and I do not own a short-term rental. I did prepare something, but I just want to speak initially just to some of the other...
Hold the mic.
Yes, I'm sorry, to some of the other speakers, just to assure them that Airbnb is one of the most police platforms around. And so not only are thorough and extensive background checks being done on each and every guest, but we also do that in order to protect our property. And so we do an extensive search into the people and the reviews. And the entire system itself is a review-based system, which allows for us to ensure that the people coming to Pittsburgh are going to add value, not only to our house, but into the Village of Pittsburgh itself. I do want to speak just a little bit to about the appeal of the Airbnbs in the Village of Pittsburgh itself. Pittsburgh is not located anywhere near Kennedig Lake or Lake Ontario. You won't find it near any of the hospitals or schools that people do tend to come to Rochester for. And so typically, people are coming to Pittsburgh to be in Pittsburgh. And the overwhelming majority of the people are here to reconnect with the neighbors that they had when they were younger. Or to see the old sledding hills, or grocery stores, or the other things in Pittsburgh that brought them back. So more often than not, the people that are coming actually do add value, not only to the small businesses in the area, but to the community and to the fabric that, you know, people have claimed there are holes. Or, these are not people who are here for one day. These are returning guests who are oftentimes also looking to purchase properties and are looking to be here for over a month at a time. So that way they can better assess the value of the village and the properties within it. And so I think if we were to take a step back and really look at the people that are coming here and giving them an opportunity to speak, I think you'd realize that the people that are coming are really providing a whole lot more value than they would ever take away from anyone in the village. And then also, I just wanted to speak to the pictures that were over there and just before any legal action is taken on the part of the 14 Airbnb owners, I do think that everyone has been proactive in taking steps to provide any sort of, you know, information, whether it be registry or anything along those lines, just so that way, you know, it can be enforced. We want to work with you and we want to be compliant so that way we can work together to find solutions and provide service while also being a part of this village. So that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Okay, next up.
Len Parker.
Bye Len.
Hello Board. STRS. Len Parker, 46 Rand Place, Pittsburgh, New York. STRS have been quietly and peacefully and constructively existing within the fabric of this community for five to 10 years and at a fairly constant level of nine to 14 properties by best estimates. They are subject to 100% of all regulations that exist for other residential properties. Is that correct Freeman?
Yeah.
I checked with you like every other month. And unless someone can articulate what major forces are expected to come and harm us, the best odds favor STRS will continue to be quiet, constructive, and modest number in the future. To the contrary, many of the municipalities outside of here have suffered from and been published about their very tangible STR issues such as increased police incidents at STR properties, reoccurring traffic jams and parking issues, public services being overwhelmed by trash collection and traffic jams, loss of revenues due to diverted hotel taxes, and many other things. We don't have these problems here. Many people have put out lists of issues like I just gave examples of, that they can't make the bridge to Pittsburgh because there is no bridge that links those catastrophic, sometimes bad things happening elsewhere with what we don't have. We're very fortunate and rejoice that our small inventory of STRs can host the likes of professionals who may be wanting to relocate here but wish to try it first. Or hosting of moms, dads, and grandparents and kids who are going to Parents Weekends at our Bud Universities. So it seems to me, a simple, effective, measured approach would be, one, grandfather existing STRs who legally bought and operated their properties. Two, register all rentals, no matter what duration the rentals may be, one night to one year. Decide if and what inspections may be warranted for any classification. And fourth, thoroughly review existing codes and regs and update them as warranted. If after that, there is more bandwidth to be applied in this area, I strongly suggest developing a high-level holistic strategic housing vision for the village. Doing more than these points that I just mentioned would smack me and cause me to worry about government overreach. Also, this approach, my last point, is a bunch of simple, easy steps that also leaves open future remedial action plans as appropriate to address specific problems and specific STR owners who might repeatedly be violating our code for bringing out the atomic bomb here, blowing everything and abolishing Israel.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks so much. Okay, next up.
Martin Martino.
Martin Martino, 30 Locust Street, Del Monte Street. 16-year resident of the village. And I'm not a short-term rental owner.
Martin, can you speak a little more into the mic?
I can't say a lot. As Marvin said, I've had a lot, but I'm not going to repeat what's already been said. The thing that I want to get across is that the legislation and the rules, the regulations that are put in today are for the long haul. What you do to allow this today will affect this community for 20, 40, 50, 100 years. And I want to cite just a specific example. I have a sister who lives in Bar Harbor Maine and she's lived there for 45 years. Beautiful, quaint community with Anna Harbor, resort town. Maybe a little more resorty than Pittsburgh is, but... I was relating to her, our discussion about short-term rentals and her circumstances in Bar Harbor Maine are that initially a few homeowners were doing short-term rentals and that got to, brings to more and more to the point where corporations did come in and start to buy properties in the entire community at a disproportionate level for short-term rentals and it's ruined their community. So the legislation, the rules, the regulations put in today have a long-term effect. While I'm supporting up this legislation, the rules that you're putting in place, think about the long-term, how it's going to affect the community. So I think we all have a lot vested here and I want my integrity, my sweat equity in this community protected and that's something you guys can do, okay?
Thank you Martin. Thanks. Okay, next.
Gene Cardamone.
Good evening.
Gene Cardamone. I live at 5 Silver Pines Drive, Pittsburgh, New York. Not in the Village of Pittsburgh, but I do have an Airbnb at 16 Lincoln Avenue. I'm going to speak tonight to the Board, as well as to the residents that have spoken here against short-term rental. I'm a business owner. I have a business, pretty good-sized business, as many of you know. It's not in the Village of Pittsburgh, but it's in Pittsburgh. We see thousands, thousands and thousands and thousands of people every year. And I can't tell you the amount of people that come to my business from out of town. And many, many of them, as some people have spoken today, are coming to visit their families, dying families, problems, bitnecks, all kinds of things. They come to, they come and stay in the Village of Pittsburgh. There's no place to stay. There's the Del Monte, which is very expensive and Airbnbs are less expensive than the Del Monte. We offer better housing for them. So I just don't understand, they have to... I want to say one other thing. I have many friends that have run businesses in the Village of Pittsburgh and gone out of business because these very people do not frequent their businesses. Restaurants, retail establishments. And when somebody calls me and says, "Do you want to visit the Village of Pittsburgh?" I say, "Absolutely not." You'll get nobody in the village to come in. And by the way, when you drive in, it's a pain in the neck, no place to park. It can't get through the village, the lights are extremely long. It's ridiculous. So I think what the residents should think about is maybe frequenting some of these businesses. Because they don't. Thank God I'm out of the Village, in Pittsburgh Plaza. People come to you, you've got plenty of places to park. But I just think it's absurd. And I do agree that if you want to do anything, limit what you have. You've got 14 good Airbnbs in this town, leave them alone. One of the things that I mentioned that to Lisa Cove and I said, "Fairport-Billard, everything." She said, "Why don't you move to Fairport?" Or "Why don't you go up in Fairport?" Well, that's what a lot of businesses have done. And in Pittsburgh, you don't have any business, they don't last long. Sammy Mina's opened up three restaurants, gone because he couldn't maintain. And the Solaz that have opened up in the Village of Pittsburgh, gone. They couldn't get enough business in the Village of Pittsburgh. That rests my case.
Thanks Gene. Thank you. Next, hold your applause.
Erin Eater.
Good evening, my name is Erin Eater. I live at 23 Allen Parkway, Pittsburgh, and I am a short-term rental owner. Thank you Village Board for taking time to host this discussion and for considering how short-term rentals are an asset to the Village of Pittsburgh. I know many people would like the opportunity to speak, so I'll keep this to three points. Number one, short-term rentals, also known as STRs, add value to our community by allowing people to experience the charm and beauty of Pittsburgh life. Visitors are thankful for being able to stay in a neighborhood home with their families rather than trying to cram into hotel rooms. Most of our guests have a connection to the area. They come to show their children the place they grew up, to visit friends and family in the area, to see their children who attend NAS and St. John Fisher, to attend paddle and pour, and they come to compete in the annual regatta. They love this community and are appreciative of the chance to stay here and connect or reconnect. Our guests report enjoying Pittsburgh's wonderful restaurants and shops as well as appreciating the ability to safely and comfortably walk to these places with their children. From breakfast at the Village Bakery or Simply Craves, to renting bikes at Topath, or taking a yoga class at Breathe, to lunch at Olive's, to shopping at a boat, Book Culture Chandeliers, to dinner at JoJo, to drinks at Thirsty's, or ice cream at the Dairy. They report meeting with real estate agents at Mitchell Pearson to inquire about becoming residents. In fact, we had somebody that reached out to us and said, "Thank you so much for letting us stay with you. We have decided we are purchasing a home," and they did, in the village. Pittsburgh is a desirable place to visit for many reasons and the STRs are a very positive way for people to feel part of our wonderful community. Number two, the STR owners I have spoken with welcome regulations. We understand the Village Board's responsibility to implement regulations to protect the integrity of Pittsburgh. I've been almost a lifelong resident here, so I get it. We favor regulations including registration requirements with a limited number of permits, license fee, to help offset costs for the village and the taxpayers, parking restrictions, proper refuse of recycling, noise restrictions, safety measures, and inspections. Last point, number three, we respectfully ask for your consideration. Short-term rental owners ask the Board and residents to proceed in the spirit of collaboration and compromise so that everyone feels part of the process and everyone's voices are heard. We, as a group of short-term rental owners, have met on several occasions and we are open to compromise and respectful compliance with reasonable regulations. We know the Board-appointed committee spent many months researching this issue and came up with reasonable regulations that they recommended that did not end up into this law. We are open to adapting our short-term rental policies to comply with those regulations. Let's work together to help the village to continue to be a wonderful place for people to live, play, work, and stay. As I have offered to the Board, if anybody in the audience would like to learn more about short-term rentals in the village, I'd be happy to talk to you and give you a tour. Please see me after the meeting for my contact information. Thank you again.
Thank you Erin. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next.
Chrissy Doggett.
Chrissy Doggett, 73 Cresview Drive in Pittsburgh, right outside the village, right next to Rice Parkway, which we'd love to have people on the street next to Rice and everywhere else for them. I'm coming at it from a different angle. I maintain the properties for Erin Eater and DeeDee DeMarco and it's amazing, I could almost say 99% of the time when I'm getting ready for the next guests, 99% of the time, there are products from Dairy sitting there. It is unbelievable, chandeliers, you know, the list goes on. They love, love to shop in our village. I also do notice when I'm looking out certain windows and I see long-term rentals that are right outside the windows, they're so not maintained. These places are beautifully manicured. You know, I've met wonderful people like the PGA Director and his wife, for example. Three times they've been here, three times. They can go anywhere in the world. The German golfer who's one of the top 20 in the world and his wife, they can go anywhere they want in the world. They come to Pittsburgh because they've loved it so much. So, lived here forever. My husband's family and our daughter's dog get in the village forever. So we know about village businesses. village businesses and what it takes to maintain it, and it's the guests that come in. It's been a pleasure maintaining these wonderful places, and it is a trickle-down effect. If you destroy this, you've also destroyed, I'm going to say it, my livelihood. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Lori Leenhouse.
Hi. I'm Lori Leenhouse, Pittsburgh.
Real close to the mic, real close. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Lori.
I live, I reside in Massedon, New York, at 44 Erie Street South. I think, I think five years ago, I purchased 21 Row, which is where the Little House is right next door, from Nancy Walter. It's a historic home that I saw potential in, spent several years renovating it. I love it, but I have not been able to leave my Massedon home as I had intended to do. In the meantime, I love historic homes, and I'm retired, and Massedon has a number of them, probably seven or eight, that I have renovated in my 15 years of retirement. Anyways, I recently purchased a home there because the barn was falling down and it was the mule barn, and renovated that barn, and it came with a house. And so I decided to Airbnb the house that is by this mule barn. So since April, I have experienced the very positive comments. People have seen me fix that house up, and I've had great guests, and we have a door cam that allows people to come in. I can see the activity that comes and goes. People are highly motivated to leave the house because I won't rate them on their guest day, and I've had great guests as a result because the ratings work both ways. They rate me, I rate them. So I think I would like to Airbnb 21 Row in the future. So I am actively watching what's happening here. I think it would bring a tremendous opportunity to people to visit the village in walking distance. It's a beautiful home, it should be shared somehow. And if I understand the map, I'm in a low density.
LDR? Is it LDR?
Yes.
Low-density residential.
Which means you will accept no applications in that area?
We have, yeah, here we go. Low-density residential, there's one existing, oh no, sorry, low-density, no. Nope. No, I was looking at office, sorry.
So.
None.
I wouldn't be here except that is a problem. I can't even apply. It would be imperfect for the village. Guests I have do come in for reunions, families, memorial services, they do visit family in, in the Massedon area, so I think everything that everyone has said in favor of them, I maintain the property way better than anybody on the street does just because I want guests to come. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yep. Next, please.
Cindy Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Cooper. Can you hear me?
Real close. Thanks.
I live at 3242 Winton Road, tiny apartment. I live in the, I, short-term rental is by Falcone. Falcone I've owned for 32 years, and when my husband was alive, our finances fell apart. I definitely want to talk to the issue on financial hardship. We took our largest asset of the house to try to fill a huge hole. Then he dies, totally unexpected. Totally, this business I'm not getting rich over, but it's filling a hole, and now that I'm 65, I don't know how I would refill that hole. I need to keep it running for about eight years, and then I could sell the house and move forward with the rest of my retirement. I'm not going to add anything else to the positives that my other colleagues have talked about, but I have a letter here from Trip Pearson. Okay, Trip Pearson here from South Street, Village of Pittsburgh. I lived in the village, Pittsburgh as a renter and homeowner since 1996. Okay, I'm going to skip around this letter. Over the years, short-term renters, they have been almost invisible to us. He lives right behind me. Their property has been well-maintained, clean, and we have never had an issue with noise. In fact, we probably add more to the noise than any renter. I think the, determining that a short-term rental is anything less than a certain number of months seems a pro. If a visiting professor for the U of R is only in town for a semester, they are not allowed to rent a property in one of the quintessential villages of Western New York. Our village has benefits from the short-term rentals, is a premier location for the various four-year colleges, Billis Training Camp, Professional, amateur golf events, as well as the numerous festivities throughout the Six County area. Why would we dissuade people from visiting our beloved village? Shouldn't we embrace outsiders from diverse backgrounds rather than putting them toward other limited abilities? Finally, I hear the arguments about how Airbnbs affect the market value of properties and that is factually wrong, and the people espousing that information is fact are not real estate professionals. When purchasing a house is an investment, you need to be able to justify the price by making your initial investment back as quickly as possible. The more you pay, the longer it will take you to make your money back. The people that overpay for houses are the people that can justify the price by chalking it up to the point of one. Of the 19 houses that have sold in the Village of Pittsburgh in the past 365 days, all of them were sold to a single family, and all but two sold were over the asking price. The federal government even allows for anyone to rent their house for up to two weeks, tax-free. We take that away. Let's, let's see. I think it would be a huge mistake to take away an individual's right to offer their house up on the basis of a short-term rental. We want visitors. Let's brag a little bit. Let's show off. We live in a truly special part of the world, and it would be ashamed, and it would be yet another reason for people outside of our community to say that Pittsburgh is unwelcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, yep, moving on.
Sheila Elliott.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Elliott. I do not reside in the Village of Pittsburgh, but I live on that one canal park place of Clover Street and have been a homeowner and a resident in Pittsburgh for 24 years. Prior to that, I lived in Hemphill for 23 years where we raised our children. And my son graduated from high school in Hemphill. I said, "I can't walk past his bedroom." I didn't even like his sister, and she left for college, and I cried for two weeks. I have a business that is on the periphery of the village at, on Grove Street, on Grove Street, suite number 123, where I'm renting businesses. I'm not here regarding that business, I'm not here as a STR owner, I'm here as a resident of Pittsburgh, and I'm also here to represent the members of our Pittsburgh Chamber of Powers. I thought that our president would be here tonight.
Into the mic.
Sorry. Thought that our president, Sherry Prue, would be here tonight. She has not come yet, which means she's not on the list. So, Greg Messner, who is a village business here, and if I go over three minutes, shoot me, okay? But I'd like to read a letter that was sent to you as village trustees on behalf of Pittsburgh Chamber of Powers, from Sherry Prue. I am writing on behalf of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Powers and the local business community to express collective concern and strong opposition to the proposed legislation for Chapter 155, short-term rentals. This legislation seeks to permanently ban new Airbnb operations in Pittsburgh Village in phase 13 existing, well, I guess it's now 14 existing Airbnb properties currently in operation, poses a significant threat to the economic vitality and diversity of our beloved community. I see your side. Pittsburgh Village has long been recognized as a charming and vibrant destination, attracting visitors from near and far. Our businesses ranging from boutiques and restaurants to service providers and retail operations depend on steady influx of visitors to sustain their operations. Short-term rentals such as those offered through Airbnb have become an integral part of our local tourism, providing flexible and accessible accommodations that draw these visitors into our village, and I might add, up and down in the Monroe, Monroe Avenue corridor, which is also part of the town and extension of the village. We are not just a village of Pittsburgh, we are a town and. While we understand the importance of preserving the character and quality of life in Pittsburgh Village, we believe that the outright ban and elimination of short-term rentals is an extreme measure that does not adequately consider the needs of the businesses in the community or the broader economic. A more balanced approach, one that includes reasonable regulations and oversight, would allow for the coexistence of short-term rentals with the preservation of our village's unique charm.
Into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I'm trying.
No.
Speedy Gonzales, which is why I'm falling over my words. We are requesting that this letter be read aloud because you, I'll get it, you have not seen and have not heard. We appreciate the board's commitment to the well-being of Pittsburgh Village and trust that you will take our concerns into account as you make your decision. The chamber stands ready to work with the board to develop policies that balance the need of residents and businesses alike, ensuring that Pittsburgh Village remains a thriving, welcoming, and prosperous community for all. Thank you on behalf of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Powers and our president for hearing this out, and thank you to the residents who have spoken. I am behind everyone who has an STR.
Thank you. Okay. Next, please.
Okay. I'm asking for direction from the board.
Just a minute.
Just quick direction from the board. Do I open it up to the room, or would you like to take the online questions now and then come back to the room?
How many onlines do we have?
Right now, I have 12. I lost my voice speaker. I have one question right now.
Why don't we, why don't we hit online and then we can open it up? Okay? Because they've been sitting, waiting online, too.
Okay, I'm going to maintain the microphone.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. My name is Cara Fallett, 25, South Main Street. She is out of town, unable to hear the person this evening, but would like to share my thoughts if I'm able. She wants to speak directly to the board, so hold on. Okay, Cara, you are allowed to speak.
Hi there, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Yes, hello. We can hear you.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Cara Fallett. My husband and I do not currently reside in Pittsburgh. Address is 6360 Gillis Road in Victor. My husband and I own the 25 South Main Street lovely building right in the, of the Village of Pittsburgh. It is known as the Collected Home Company in Chicky. We own a successful Airbnb in the Village of Victor at our other commercial property, which is right above Lovely Bride, which is a bridal shop in the village. And we have been in business for two years. We were interested in renovating the space above 25 South Main Street. It's a great apartment that used to be a hair salon. It is within walking distance to all the lovely commercial businesses within the village as well as restaurants, and it's just a great way to kind of get out and walk around and what have you. And so we are currently in the zone, the TDD zone. However, we cannot operate an Airbnb above our building because we are within 100 feet of the zone MDR. However, there is an Airbnb at 6 and 8, the address 6 and 8. So we're just, we're just trying to understand how that zoning works, and you know, if 6 and 8 are able to have an Airbnb, why can't we, if we are in the zone that does allow unlimited?
There was a question, I think. There was a question. Why? Well, we're receiving your comments, we're not prepared to ask questions, we're just trying to get the comments. We can speak with you after the meeting if you'd like.
Yep, yep, that's fine. I just, that was, that was a kind of a question, comment, all the, all the things. So I conclude the question and the comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else online?
I have Mr. Pearson, he requested to speak on the speakers list, but he just, he looks so.
Okay, maybe he'll, he'll come back.
Maybe he will come back right now. That is all I have from online.
Okay. Before we just open it up, I would, oop. Before we open this up, I would like to just say a couple of things. Some of you may not be aware that the Board of Trustees did enact a rental registry piece of legislation earlier this year where any rental, whether it's short-term or long-term, will be registered with the village and subject every year to an annual inspection. So there will be oversight of, and we're putting together right now, actually, the form to create the certificate. So that's, that's something that I think is positive no matter what, you know? I think we just, it's a good thing for our community. And the other thing, too, I just want to clarify, for the proposed legislation tonight, and there is also in the back of the room, there's a large sort of map of our zoning for the village, and there's a posted on there of where the areas would be allowed if this law were to be enacted within our village, where we could have potentially some STRs. But just to kind of give you an overview, right now, if the law were to be enacted based on the current guidelines in the legislation, it would allow for six Airbnbs in the, and there's a legend on the map, so we're using acronyms like TDD and all of these words. Traditional downtown development is what that means. With the legislation right now, there are two units that exist currently in that area on the zoning map, and after the legislation, nor, no more would ever be available. So it would be limited to two. The mixed-use Erie Canal, that's really all along Shane Place and down the canal, that's called MUEC. There are no residential units. The only possibility after this law would be enacted would be potentially one building in Northfield Common, which does have a second floor, potentially to be converted. The village gateway business, that's down by, as you come in underneath the railroad bridge on, bridge onto North Main Street, past Jojo's, the Dairy, Del Monte. Let's see, we have zero residential units there now, two permits could possibly be available, so only two could go in. And the last one is, can't read it, LOR.
LOR.
What is that?
Limited Office Residential.
Yeah, limited office residential, thank you. Right now, there is one existing already in the zone that can remain, and then there will only be one more permit to go, to available. So that again, after, if this legislation is enacted, it would restrict just to those areas, predominantly commercial areas, to about six short-term rentals. All of the other currently existing STRs would be sunsetted, meaning that they would have to be removed, sold, whatever, within the year. So I just wanted to sort of give you the framework of that going forward. Excuse me one second, please, I'm speaking. Thank you, and then we can all raise hands and take questions. Okay? So I just wanted to give you sort of the framework of what that looks like. Are there any other comments before the board, before we do open this up?
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification. The existing ones, according to this legislation, they can be transferred to a primary use, they could be sold, or they can be converted to long-term rent.
Sure, of course. Yep, yep. Yeah, Dorothea, do you want this?
Could I actually let her?
Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry, Justin, I missed you, sorry. And then we're going to go down to Dorothea.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize also that in TDD and MUEC, we have an unlimited number of special residential grants on the second floor, even more than 100 people are essential property lines. So there are some more provisions than I can put in the earlier comments, and there's more licenses as well in the legislation.
Thank you for that. Steve, I know you did the research. Steve did the research on this in terms of where you are within 100 feet of any other residential property lines, and so this was derivative of him doing the measurements and doing the?
The numbers the mayor presented are correct. Based on the law, the proximity issue and the numbers allowed for residential units, there are no more available.
It's not 100 feet from house to house, it's 100 feet from property line to property line?
Correct.
Okay. Dorothea?
If I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to hand off to Dave.
Thanks.
And then, Dorothea.
For the benefit of being between the two of you. So my only comment is, so the law is currently crafted, right, that everybody's provided public comment on, to the degree that it may be different at the point of ratification or approval, it can only be more permissive or more flexible. It can't be less. What that means is, for example, right now, if it were to be enacted as is, there'd be one year to trustee Lightkit's comment where it would no longer be able to operate as an STR. In the review and the discussion before adoption, we could make that one year and six months. We could make that two years. The 100 feet comment that we just discussed, we could make that 50. So anything that is more permissive can be adjusted before the final approval of the law. We cannot be more restrictive than in what is currently written in the law. The only other comment is, thank you, everybody, for your comments today. I think we can all agree on that.
Absolutely, yep. Dorothea.
Okay. I'm just going to address the email comments received prior to the meeting real quick to make sure we get this, obviously out of the way, but I want to make sure everybody is aware. The board received prior to the meeting 14 comments. Those were reported onto the board. I'm just going to get the name of the people that sent the comments, and if there's any questions, we're not going to read them out loud.
Some of them are already read tonight.
Some more. So we received comments. They will be, thank you. Just a reminder, it will be part of the record. John Lindbeck, Sue Julian, and Rick Shanet, Brett Captainess, Tim Cunningham, Nancy Coats, Marielle and Malusha, Linda Grisbein, Louise Wizzo Pearson, Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce, Chris Manziri, Trig Peterson, June Reeves, R. Pierce, Peter Brizzi. And then I did receive two comments when I got to meeting. I think one I tried to forward onto the board, but I'm not sure if you had time to review that.
Who is it? Who's it from? Do you know? Sorry.
Yeah. Abdullah, Egypt? I don't know. I have.
Oh, is it chamber member? Okay.
Yeah, and a recent one that came in from Peggy Brizzi. So if the board are ready to read those two comments, I mean, I need to do that.
You forwarded them to us? So we can?
No, because I was in the middle of the meeting.
But you will be forwarding.
I will be forwarding to the board.
Okay, okay.
On day one.
Yep. Now, appreciate that.
And I do not have any more comments on the screen, so if you want to open up.
Do we need a motion to make that a part of the testimony in the public hearing?
It would not hurt.
Okay.
Sure, why not?
Then I will make the motion at this point to accept the received email correspondence relating.
Into the mic.
I will make a motion at this point to accept the email correspondence received related to this public hearing as part of the testimony for the public hearing.
Second. We have a second roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Coat.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion cast.
Okay. We're going to open it up briefly, or, oh, wait, we still have the public hearing open, so.
I would assume you're going to open it up. Sorry. I would assume you're going to open it up to people who have not spoken.
People who have not spoken, that's true, and then also.
And in that case, they would be part of the public hearing.
Oh, yes, but I also, we'll cover it after the public hearing. You had some thoughts on process as well going forward that we need to share with the board.
That is true.
And with the public, so I'm opening up to anybody who has not signed up but wishes to just come up and make some comments, three minutes or less, please. Yes, come up.
Hi, Collette.
Do you want to get it?
Yep.
Go loud.
Really close to the mic, please.
I've been here.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Oh, Yon, 27 Grant Place. I've been here, I guess, almost 33 years.
Closer to the mic, please.
And, you know, we came here as family, and we were surrounded by lots of other families coming in. It was the first wave of people now my age who decided to move out and sell their houses to move over to families. And so we've been here a long time, and we've seen that movement back and forth, but something that's relatively new in the past couple of years are houses that sell and sit empty. We just sit, and sometimes you see a little bit of activity, but I feel like that we're missing the point, that right now, it's really hard for families to find a place to live. It's hard for a lot of people to find a place to live. So we're talking about businesses and, you know, using houses for a business, and that means investment, and instead of people coming, they bring their venues and live in here, which also brings money into the village. It's not just people coming and visiting, they bring money to the village. The people who live here every day bring money to the village and the town, giving life and community. And I think nobody seems to be talking about that. It's all about short-term stuff. And, you know, I'm just concerned, because if you put this village on the market and you start investing, because you let a few in, and they think, well, we're all just raring down, we can get a few more in. And I think that's something to really be concerned about, because we know people all along the New England border, North Conway, New Hampshire, has turned into Airbnb's all over, and people can't find places to live because it's all short-term rentals. So people can ski and go hiking, but now nobody who works there can afford a place to live. So it's something to think about, and I just want to, you know, with the people who live here all the time, having people buy those houses is also important, not just short-term rentals.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
It's Collette's last name.
Yon, Yon. Yeah. Anyone else wishing to comment who hasn't spoken yet? Yes, please. Come on up.
Hi, Dan.
How's it going?
Good. Name and address, please.
My name is Daniel Wilson. I live at 26 Church Street, right here. I came to this meeting because obviously I have a vested interest in the village. I know a lot of people in here, I'm the chair of the preservation board right now, so I've met a lot of people, and thank you, everybody, for coming to our board and everything you do. But I came to this meeting because I couldn't have been more down the middle, and I still am. The younger generation, these Airbnbs really do mean a lot to us. My family's from Chicago, they come to visit me. Like someone earlier said, that Del Monte is really our only option, as well as the Canal and Ben, but the Airbnbs are very important to this village, as well as making sure that they're regulated. So I'm up here, and I'll say it again, I couldn't be more down the middle on this one. I would just say that make sure that this isn't too overbearing to a point where that there's no options for Airbnbs, but yet make this law practical enough that they aren't, that this village isn't taken over. And coming from me as preservationist, everybody should understand that this village means a lot to me and my family, and the way that it's set up right now needs to be preserved and kept the way it is, but that there has to be these types of options for younger generation and for people coming to visit our village, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak who hasn't spoken yet or signed up? Yes?
Please hand them to the clerk.
Now?
At the end's fine. Thank you. Yes, yes. Come on up. I know you. Hi, Greg.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Messner from Messner, Florida. I'm wearing two hats, but I'll make it pretty quick. First of all, I do want to comment that we have been a business in town here for going on our 48th year, so thank you.
Greg, just your, what's your address? Your home?
Brighton.
In Brighton, and your business, okay.
Right. Homeaway from Home is the Village.
You live here.
But, no, in all reality, I just wanted to say a couple of words. Basically, I think the last gentleman that spoke really said it best, that, you know, I think we need a little bit of, I support the businesses, the ones that are not here, they're a quiet voice because they're out working tonight, and they're hiring people. Hiring people is not easy, so there's a lot of people out there that aren't here tonight that I want to represent their voice. And the thing is, we have to work together. I think there's more areas that we're together on than we're divided on, and I don't want to see us being divided on such, you know, maybe put it up one more time, but I think the people that have invested in the village, and that's us and other people throughout here, just owe it to you to really make a hard decision. Take your time, don't overreact, and again, I think, just think of everyone involved here. It's a great village. I don't think we're looking to change things, but also we want to, you know, make the future better. We're in the business of having another generation, so we're not going anywhere anytime soon. So again, I just want to applaud both sides of the aisle here, that, you know, you have to look, and I think we need to compromise. I can't say it enough, I think there's just, you know, we don't want to divide. We've come too far for 100-plus years or 200 years here, that compromises every day. So thanks for your time, and again, thanks for everyone's effort, too.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak who has not spoken, or even if you haven't signed up? All good? Anybody online, just real quick?
Nobody online.
Okay. So I guess the question is, do we want to keep the hearing open, close the hearing? Close it?
So.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just bringing it back. We've heard from everybody, so, you know.
So I would, do you want me to speak to process?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and I want to give Jeff the.
No.
Okay. Pop up.
I would appreciate it.
It has to go to the local waterfront consistency.
Hold on, hold on, Greg. They want.
Yeah, they need the mic. They do.
You can't hear me?
They can't hear you.
You're deaf. You're deaf. Anyway. This has to go from here to the local waterfront consistency point, a local water consistency review to planning board.
Jeff, I just.
I think as much.
I just want you to say, what is a local waterfront consistency review? Just so people understand.
It's a local waterfront consistency, no, I'm sorry. It is, we have a local waterfront revitalization program that we are joint partners with the town. That requires that any action occurring in, along the canal, if you look at that zoning map back there, you will see an outline of the local waterfront district. Anything happened in that district requires a local waterfront consistency review. Now the trustees have a form statute, or something we can now send to planning board for review. That'll be the next step. The reason I suggested closing the public hearing is that that review can take up to four months, with the timeframe set forth in that code, I'm sure it won't, but I'm going to suggest to the board, following the planning board's work on this, they ought to have another public hearing before acting on this legislation. So that's why I think it makes more sense to close the public hearing, not try to shoot in the dark for a new day to the future, and we might be able to hear this again after the planning board's.
Thank you. No, that was helpful.
So what do we do about the moratorium?
Extend it.
What do we do about the moratorium? My recommendation is that we will extend it with its current restrictions.
So currently, the moratorium ends September 8th, correct?
It is correct.
So how do we legally, within the window, do we have to extend it tonight? How does that work?
They're going to tell you the process, because you went through the dates, I believe, earlier, didn't you?
So it's on your desks as of yesterday.
So it's.
It's an H week, which is Monday.
Yes.
There is an H P A meeting on Monday, but that is starting at 5:30. So the next meeting should be on Monday to move that extension to public hearing.
Moratorium extension to public hearing, yes.
That extension will then be thrown by the board on.
It looks like the 27th of August.
So the 27th of August will be the public hearing.
For the extension.
For the extension of the moratorium. And you all know the moratorium is the pause button, okay? We're just keeping that pause button until the planning board does its review. Yeah. Did you hear me?
On Tuesday, on Tuesday, August 27th.
Yeah, we'll be putting out notices on the hearing, and I'll also, from my office, I'll send out an e-bulletin. If you haven't signed up, please go on our website and sign up, and we'll let you know the steps in the process, just to confirm it, so people understand what next steps are. Okay, anything else from you, Dorothea or Jeff?
Real quick from me, I need, I've never been. Real quick, I just need the board to verify those dates work with calendars. I have to have a call.
So which date?
It's Monday.
So it's the 19th.
Monday, 4:00, 5:30.
Before 5:30?
So we would have to, depending on how quick the board feels they can move, 5:00.
5:00?
And then I would suggest a similar time on the 27th, but the 27th, it's going to be a public hearing, so that's automatically.
Time certain, 6:00.
So, Dorothea, I am away on the 27th for the public hearing. I'm on vacation, but there'll still be a quorum.
Oh, yeah, we'll have a quorum, just to move it forward.
I am not here next week, but I will be here on the 27th.
Okay, so we still have a quorum either way, just to move business forward for the village.
I'm here for both.
Yeah, I'll be here for both. Yep.
Really?
Will you be here? Okay.
Okay, Dan.
So the 19th at 5:00.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing on the new local law for the short-term rules.
Is there a second on the motion, please?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Coat.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion cast.
I want to thank everybody. I think, I think everybody really expressed, you know, their opinions, everybody was cordial, we're all neighbors at the end of the day, and we're just really trying to sort out and find that balance for our community and what's best for everybody. So thanks to all of you, really. Well done, villagers and non-villagers. Okay, what else do we have?
We just have this one who didn't show, our public hearing. What do we do with this?
Well, let's see, yeah, they never showed.
They didn't show.
Oh, do we want to adjourn the previous?
Yes.
We adjourned it.
We make a motion?
We can't dispute our.
Wait, what do we need to do?
Thank you for my money.
Yeah, that'll do it.
Thank you.
Hey, you know what? Let's take a short recess.
We're going to take a short recess, motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Okay, roll call, five-minute recess, roll call. Hey, you know what? Let's take a short recess.
We're going to take a short recess. Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Five-minute recess. Roll call.
Trustee Lycan. Trustee Lanfair.
Resess five minutes.
Oh, recess five minutes.
Say aye.
Say aye. Yeah, yeah, aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Oh, see, to stretch.
Ooh, okay.
Always. Yeah. Thank you, the board, all of you. Thank you.
It's well handled. Well done.
Thank you, Lily. Good to see you. Lot of work, I know. Coming out.
There's a cap here. There's a cap here somewhere.
Great to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Yes. Right away. It keeps me up. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people.
I think it's good.
It's a nice, it's, it's, it's well handled. Well done.
Thank you, Lily. Good to see you. Lot of work, I know. Coming out. Maybe she's given all these guys...
There's a cap here. There's a cap here somewhere.
Great to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Yes. Right away. It keeps me up. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people.
I think it's good. It's just finding balance.
It's, it's, it's well handled. Well done.
Thank you, Lily. Good to see you. Lot of work, I know. Coming out. Maybe she's given all these guys...
There's a cap here. There's a cap here somewhere.
Great to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You, yes. Right away. It keeps me up. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people.
I think it's good. It's just finding balance.
It's a nice, it's, it's, it's well handled. Well done.
Thank you, Lily. Good to see you. Lot of work, I know. Coming out. Maybe she's given all these guys...
There's a cap here. There's a cap here somewhere.
Great to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Right away. It keeps me up. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people.
I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance. That's what I think. I'm like, oh, my God, there's people. I think it's good. It's just finding balance.